Good evening once again and we're delighted to have you all with us this evening. Pardon me if I'm a bit nasal this evening, I'm trying to get over a cold but I think a lot of us can claim the same thing. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live by Boston City TV on YouTube as well as on Comcast Channel 24, RCN Channel 13, and FiOS Channel 1962. It will be rebroadcast at a later date. If you would like to speak this evening but have not yet signed up, please see our staff person, Ms. Lena Parvex, out in the hallway. Sign-up for public comment will close this evening at 6:30 PM. Now first, here in BPS, we take great pride in celebrating the achievements of our talented and dedicated teachers and staff. At this time, I'd like to invite the superintendent and my colleagues on the committee to join me on the floor for a presentation to our librarian teachers, excuse me, and paraprofessionals. The Massachusetts School Library Association is a professional organization committed to providing students with access to effective school library programs led by credentialed school librarians which provide opportunities for every student to learn and to succeed. Each year, the MSLA gives awards to its members who exemplify this vision. Tonight, the school committee is thrilled to recognize four of our BPS educators who won MLS, MSLA awards this year. Let's give them all a round of applause. It's rare that one district receives so many awards in just one year, and we could not be more proud, of course. We'll begin first with Bonnie McBride, a library teacher from Fenway High School, the recipient of the 2018 President's Award. Ms. McBride, please come up. And while Ms. McBride is greeting the committee, I'll just read the citation for everyone. You can come over here, I'll give you their citation. You get to take something home. "The Boston School Committee extends its appreciation to Bonnie McBride, librarian teacher from Fenway High School, for earning the President's Award from the Massachusetts School Library Association. The chairperson and members of the school committee of the city of Boston join with the superintendent of schools in congratulating you for continuing to uphold excellence in your teaching practice and for the example you continue to set for all your fellow educators, dated April 25, 2018." Next up, we have Ms. Morgan Van Cleef, a library teacher from the PA Shaw Elementary School, also a recipient of the 2018 President's Award. Ms. Van Cleef incorporates robots, computer programming, and steam-building challenges into the libraries as engaging ways of learning the essential skills of collaboration, communication, and digital literacy. These critical skills will help put her students on a level playing field for the future. Congratulations, Ms. Van Cleef. Next up, we have Susan Harari, a library teacher from the Boston Latin School and a recipient of the 2018 Super Librarian Award for Program Excellence. This award recognizes the work Ms. Harari has done to bring the human library to BLS, bring Boston professionals to meet with students to discuss current events. Ms. Harari has also recently written a successful federal grant for a new teen wellness center in the library, as well as managed a visit to BLS by the poet Richard Blanco, who met with students and ran an afternoon workshop for teachers. Thank you, Ms. Harari. And finally, we have the ubiquitous Maura O'Toole, a library paraprofessional at the Mather Elementary School in Dorchester. Please come up. Ms. O'Toole is a recipient of the Massachusetts School Library Association Audrey Friend Scholarship. So you get some money, too? Oh, that's great. Maura O'Toole has worked for BPS as a library paraprofessional for 12 years and is passionate about connecting children to books. A Boston Public Schools graduate, she finished her Bachelor of Arts degree at Leslie University in 2017, congratulations, and is now enrolled in Simmons College pursuing a graduate degree in Library and Information Science and her school library teacher certification. Way to go, Ms. O'Toole. I do also want to recognize Dr. Deborah Froggett, who's here this evening, she's our director of BPS Library Services, and Diethe Ellis, the head librarian at the Boston Latin School and executive board member for the Boston area of the Mass School Library Association, for their leadership and support. Thank you to both of you as well. Congratulations to all of our librarians tonight. And if we could take a quick picture with all of us, I think that would be great. meeting. If the minutes are approved as presented, hard copies will be made available immediately in the hallway with the other handouts. If changes are made, you can access the minutes tomorrow on the BPS website. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the April 11th meeting as presented.
So moved.
That's a motion from Ms. Olivera Avila, and it sounds like a second from Vice Chair Coleman. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the minutes by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Move on now to the superintendent's report. I present to you our superintendent, Dr. Tommy Chang.
Thank you so much, Chairman LaCanto. Good evening, School Committee. Good evening to everyone who is here in the audience and watching on TV. I hope everyone had a opportunity to rejuvenate themselves a bit during the April recess. During that time, I had the pleasure of speaking at a conference titled ASUGSV in San Diego, and I spoke about the Innovation Opportunity Gap, where I was accompanied by several people from the BPS team, our managing director of innovation, Sujata Bhatt. We had a teacher from New Mission, Corey McCarthy, and we also had Amy from Dearborn. In my speech, I emphasized that there are innovation deserts in many of our cities, including Boston. I emphasize that for many of our most underserved students, they actually live in innovation deserts. And too often, innovation is seen as the icing on the cake rather than the cake itself. So we need to redesign our systems to actually enable innovation to be part of the work that we do each day, literally to be baked in the cake. This means student-centered systems, broader definitions of student success, innovation for all, not just those meeting or exceeding current definitions of success. We need to help our most underserved students leapfrog and give them opportunities that are actually ahead of time, not stuff that was 10 years old. Actually, think about the work that Sociedad Latina did as a good example of that, having our Yale students during the summer given the opportunity to do entrepreneur work in partnership, not only with a local university, but in, literally in downtown Boston during the summer. I also had an opportunity to visit a really intriguing high school in Southern California, Vista High School. They are a recipient of, I forgot the name of that grant now, oh, one of the HQ, no, I apologize. They received one, oh, XQ grants, yeah, they received one of the XQ grants. And what they are doing is, a whole high school that's in the midst of reinventing their curriculum to make it both academic and high-quality career technical education in some of the most innovative sectors. So for example, I saw a collaboration between ROTC instructor, who happened to be a former pilot in the Air Force, working with a photography teacher to help young people gain certification to be drone pilots and drone camera operators. So at the end of four years, these young people will be able to be certified to do surveys, for example, which is a huge industry now with drones. So it was just neat to be able to see that there are places that we can learn from, and I like to joke, to do R&amp;D, to rip off and then disseminate. But that's the way we do best, we get inspired by watching good work being done in other places. And so, just wanted to share that. Later on this evening, there will be a presentation on NAEP results, the 2017 National Assessment of Educational Progress. It's otherwise known as the nation's report card. Boston Public Schools is one of only two large districts nationwide to make significant gain in eighth-grade reading. We are only, we are also one of only six districts out of 27 total participating in a group of large public school districts to make significant gains since 2015 on the NAEP. One of eight districts to make significant gains over the last decade. We are proud of the growth, credit goes to our young people, of course, most, to our educators. It's encouraging to see improvement. But one thing that is unfortunately still pretty clear in the data, there are, we are not closing achievement gaps for certain subgroups as much as we should be. This is not only in Boston, but it's also nationally. And while we're moving in the right direction overall, we realize we still have a lot of work to do with achievement gaps. And of course, that is the priority of this school committee and this is the priority of this school district. Also later on this evening, members of the leadership team will give a presentation about our proposal to close Dorchester Academy, which was placed in Level 4 turnaround status in 2014 for underperformance on the MCAS. And during that report, we will explore in detail our rationale for this proposal. I want to say that there are members in the audience from the Dorchester Academy team, and I had the opportunity to meet many of them this year, got a chance to visit with them during their graduation for many of their students. I just want to commend the team for some really, really difficult work that you have done this year and even years before. This is a team that we want to keep together. They are going to continue doing their work together at Excel High School, supporting off-track youth at that school. So I just want to give them a bit of a shout-out publicly before we get into the report later on today. And BPS will continue to develop and evolve our alternative education programs so we can give our off-track youth the best chance possible not only to graduate from high school, but be successful in college career and life. Want to get into a few bright spots. Spring recess is when hundreds of BPS students get a chance to travel overseas, to explore foreign lands, immerse themselves in new cultures. Last week, 265 student travelers, along with 100 district trip leaders, embarked on a cross-cultural learning experiences in nine different countries, from Costa Rica to Czech Republic to China to Spain. And these are a number, these numbers have gone up from last year. Last year, we were at 238 student travelers, this year we're at 265. History scholars from English High visited the ancient ruins of Athens, I believe that's on the screen right now, snowed in New Mission students participating in history and language immersion experiences in Japan. And new to this year, students from three BPS high schools, Fenway, Boston Green Academy, Boston Arts Academy, fundraised and planned week-long service learning trips to help rebuild hurricane-ravaged neighborhoods in Puerto Rico and Houston, Texas. This April, 20% of our student travelers were from elementary and middle schools. In fact, this is the first time the Warren Prescott sent students on international trip. And a group of sixth graders joined peers from the Lee School on a biodiversity tour of Costa Rica. And they ziplined, they explored a volcano, hopefully not inside a volcano, and they volunteered at a local school. Our students' responses to global calls to action and their willingness to vote vacation time for more learning and service truly highlights what the essence of Boston Public Schools is all about. Our young people have such a thirst for these sort of experiences, I'm just so glad that we're able to provide that for them. So definitely a shout-out. At the same time, students and their chaperones weren't the only ones who got to travel. A number of BPS educators, administrators also participating in three unique international professional development programs. Excellence for All, sponsored at STEM PD Field Trip, I shouldn't call it Field Trip, Professional Adult Learning Experience, to Finland and Estonia, where BPS representatives, including many of, many from EFA schools, studied the integration of coding and robotics in elementary and secondary curriculum. They also explored how Finnish and Estonian educators have created robust 21st learning experiences for all students by strategically infusing technology and multidisciplinary projects in all contents from the earliest grades to foster a culture of rigor and innovation. BPS representatives also traveled to Brazil, where they learned about Afro-Brazilian history and culture. They learned about Brazil's, quote, "black Rome," and got a chance to really understand how Brazilians view race relative to social class, diverse culture and history. And lastly, we had a group that went to Cuba through the arts, creating art with Cuban students and teachers and getting mentored by Cuban artists, attending classic emerging art performances and discovering why this nation is so committed to creative expression. And there was also professional development opportunities for teachers here locally. What you see up there is the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston hosted three BPS teachers, as well as digital learning specialist Nick Gonzalez for a week-long externship program for April, during April vacation. And what externship is, it's an opportunity for our teachers to learn about what adults and what careers in a different sector, what that career might feel like, so they can bring some of those experiences to our young people. The partnership exposed teachers to emerging technologies and IT operations so they were more equipped to mentor students on STEM careers and educational options. During the week, the educators spoke with the previous Boston Fed interns about their experiences, and at the end of the week, they were presented lesson plans they intend to incorporate into the classrooms, applying what they learned from the program, and then they all received, of course, certificates of completion. So that was all going on last week during April break. Earlier this week, I had an opportunity to join 30 members of Mastery Transcript Consortium, or MTC. They convened here in the Bowling Building, and this was a gathering of educators from all across the country who are focused on transforming the high school experience by changing the high school transcript. The MTC believes that high school transcript is a broken instrument that no longer serves students and teachers outside the school walls. And I like to say the future transcript should not be a list of courses and grades, the future transcript should look like a LinkedIn page. And a LinkedIn page will demonstrate to an employer what a young person is able to do, what a young person knows, and actually be able to exhibit and show products that young people have produced. And it's, I would rather see a resume that's, or a LinkedIn page that, where I can click and see products that people I'm wanting to employ, what they are able to do and produce, rather than looking at a list of courses that they completed in college. I think that's obvious, that should be the same way for our young people. So this consortium, the Mastery Transcript Consortium, is all working to try to figure out what this sort of new transcript of the future should look like. The work it's doing has the potential to fundamentally change what education looks like. Some big questions that they're grappling with are, how do we measure student success? What do we value? I had an opportunity to say a few words to them, and I explained that education be, should, education should be about learning across subjects, personalized learning, and ability to demonstrate skills and content knowledge through tasks, authentic tasks. And MTC is working towards these goals, and that's why I personally support this organization as a thought partner in figuring out how this new model will work. We had one of our schools participate, and that is, my goodness, BDA, Boston Day Evening Academy, they have been working on competency-based instruction and competency-based transcript for many years, and so they were part of this convening. Next bright spot, two East Boston High School seniors and scholar-athletes got the surprise of a lifetime yesterday when they each were awarded a four-year, full-tuition college scholarship in front of their families and school community. This was a complete surprise for them. These scholarships are the results of a partnership between scholar-athletes and Curry and Regis Colleges. Scholar-athletes work, well, Scholar-athletes, the organization works to close opportunity achievement gaps by supporting student achievement through athletics. As you all know, they help and support the opening of dedicated spaces in many of our high schools called zones, where there is staff there that support them on homework, college essays, they learn about scholarship opportunities, and they, most importantly, develop a roadmap for life after high school. So Kayla Elliott, East Boston High School senior, has a 5.2 cumulative GPA, I don't know how that's possible, and plans to pursue a career in nursing, and she will attend Curry College. She is a member of the National Honor Society and captain of her varsity softball team. And her classmate, Julie Annie Jorge, will attend Regis College. She earned a 5.05 cumulative GPA and also two sport athlete and captains, both volleyball and basketball. And a member of the National Honor Society as well. Both young women are residents of East Boston, members of the East Boston High School Athlete Zone. And scholar-athlete executive director Daphne Griffin noted that both young women, quote, "represent the best of scholar-athletes and of Boston Public Schools." And so, congratulations to both young ladies, and to thank you to the colleges who are accepting two amazing young people from Boston Public Schools. Okay. Today, we had Talk, Read, and Play Day across the school district. This is an initiative of Boston Public Schools Countdown to Kindergarten. It promotes speaking, reading, engaging with children, particularly in critical years of early childhood development. Students and young children at several locations, including Perkins School and the Children's Museum, participated in a collective flash rhyme mob to promote the campaign. They recited rhymes, songs, poems, units in libraries, community centers, and schools throughout the city, all at the same time. So I just wanted to do a quick recognition of that. And lastly, just as a quick reminder, BPS Got Talent is the district's first district-wide talent show, and launches today, and is open to all K-12 students who want to showcase their creativity on social media. So from now through May 21st, any BPS student can submit a video or photo of their special talent, including singing, rapping, photography, dancing, acting, drawing, painting, spoken-word poetry or monologues, or playing musical instruments. And to submit the video, go onto External Affairs BPS, all one word, externalaffairsbps.org/bgt. Or via the BPS Office of External Affairs Facebook, Instagram, or Twitter accounts by using the hashtag #BPSGotTalent, and you see kind of an advertisement for that. Share your entry with friends and family, improve your chances. So that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Chang. Are there any questions or discussion for the superintendent? Mr. O'Neill?
Just a couple of quick comments. Superintendent, I'm delighted that we continue to expand the number of students that travel internationally in the global economy, the world is the classroom, and it's great that we do that. I look forward to when we talk about thousands of children traveling, not just hundreds, and that we try to expand the opportunities as equitably possible across the district. And the second piece, I really am intrigued by that work on the transcript. I love that analogy you gave of it should be a LinkedIn page. I can assure you, my transcript in Boston Public Schools do not have a 5.2 on it. But I love that idea, and I really encourage you to push on that work as much as possible, and look forward to you bringing those thoughts to us when it, when this outside group has some ideas on it. And lastly, I know the chair thanked all the, and applauded all the librarians, and I know we all chuckled when Ms. O'Toole came up. And I'm glad your peers in your profession have recognized you all, but Ms. O'Toole, I want to say to you in front of your peers, we do appreciate when you come to the school committee and talk to us. You hold our feet to the fire, particularly during the budget season, and you let us think about the implications of the decisions we make on the librarians and the students that you serve. So in front of your peers, I wanted to make sure we particularly thanked you for continuously keeping us informed.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. If there are no other further questions or discussion, I just want to make a couple points. First, thank you, Dr. Chang, for recognizing the Boston scholar-athletes who were honored and surprised yesterday. I will be seeing Ms. Elliott on campus next, next year during my day job at Curry. I want to give folks a couple of quick updates on a few items of note that are out there in terms of current events. One is, some folks might have seen it yesterday, there was a Supreme Judicial Court decision with respect to the charter cap. Those of you that have been following the issue closely will recall that this body took a position on the question, the ballot question that was on the ballot in 2016, related to whether or not to open the charter cap in the Commonwealth. And ultimately, we're on the successful side, but nevertheless, there was litigation that followed, and specifically, five students from Boston as a representative class that sued the state seeking to declare the cap on charter school seats unconstitutional. I'm happy to say that the Supreme Judicial Court ruled yesterday in favor of public schools and in favor of the idea that the charter cap is in fact constitutional. I won't speak extensively to it, I still haven't had a chance to digest the 37-page opinion, but for any of you that are interested in it, in addition to any of the news coverage, you can find the text of the opinion on the Supreme Judicial Court, its website. On that note as well, those of you that have been paying attention to the last couple of meetings, we had some conversation at the last meeting, at the last two meetings, as a matter of fact, about this year's budget at the state, as well as some pending legislation as we draw to a close in the legislative session on Beacon Hill. And I wanted to give you a quick update, following a presentation from the Mayor's Office of Intergovernmental Affairs. This body took it upon itself to craft a letter to send to a couple of different individuals just yesterday. We sent a letter to each of the Ways and Means Committees in the Senate and the House advocating for support for a couple of bills that are up right now. The House bill, the House budget, I should say, House 4400, contains a line item in it for charter school reimbursement. That's 7061-9010. I've committed all these numbers to memory, of course. And as, you know, folks that have been following this along know, full reimbursement of the charter school reimbursement line item has positive effects for BPS as well as other public school districts across the Commonwealth. In the Governor's Budget, the shortfall in reimbursement was $17 million. In the House Budget, it was $9 million. We're hopeful that we continue to close that gap with the Senate's bill that will come out soon. And we're thankful for a couple of representatives, including one from our own delegation, Representative Coppins from West Roxbury, who has sponsored amendments to the House budget that... Coppins from West Roxbury, who has sponsored amendments to the House Budget that have supported fully funding that charter reimbursement line item. The other item that we were advocating for is House Bill 3759, which is part of the Mayor's Legislative Package, seeking approximately $16.5 billion from the Mass Convention Center Authority in recognition of tax revenues that are collected within the city of Boston but are not currently being used in the city of Boston. As some of you might recall, that money is earmarked for an expansion of the Convention Center in South Boston, but that expansion has not happened and is not planned to happen in the near future. And so we're hopeful that that bill, which was reported favorably out of committee, will be passed before the end of this legislative session. The third letter we sent was an additional letter that acted as a cover letter for those two notes to the Ways and Means Committees, to our delegation. We have, as you may know, 23 representatives and senators in the general court of the Commonwealth. And we wanted to reach out to our representatives, our senators, to offer an opportunity to have a further conversation and talk a little bit more about why these bills are so important to BPS, but also why some of the legislation that's out there, particularly around Chapter 70 reform, doesn't go far enough. We know that the FBRC, the Foundation Budget Review Commission, proposals are, have been reported out favorably from committee as well, that's Senate Bill 223. But the bare facts that were laid before us by the Mayor's Intergovernmental Affairs Office a few meetings ago make clear that Boston will see little to gain from those reforms. And in fact, that, the money that we would stand to gain would not be realized until year eight of the implementation. And so something that we've advocated as well is an additional bill that was sponsored by Senator Sonia Chang Diaz from Jamaica Plain, that's Senate 220, which has not been reported out favorably. But nevertheless, we feel it's an opportunity for some education for our delegation and beyond that would change what's called the municipal revenue growth factor. Right now, Boston is regarded for Chapter 70 funding in the same way as other wealthier communities like Wellesley, for instance, would be because of the high property values. What it doesn't do is accurately represent the high poverty that we have in our district as well. And so we want to change that and we are advocating for that specific change in the Chapter 70 funding formula. And so we want to continue to ask constituents, I met with the Citywide Parent Council last night, and we've had conversations with the Boston Teachers Union and BSAC as well, about joining forces and advocating for both of the bills that I mentioned earlier, as well as continuing to advocate with our senators and representatives for that additional modification to the foundation formula. So we'd ask that you do the same. We've left copies of the letters out in the hallway, and if folks want a copy that are watching on TV tonight, you can certainly write to our Executive Secretary Liz Sullivan, who will provide you a copy as well. And you can use that as a talking point, if you will, in reaching out to your senators and representatives. If we have no further comments or questions for discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive the superintendent's report.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there any discussion or objection to the motion? Is there any objection to approving the superintendent's report by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the motion carries. All right, we'll move on now to general public comment. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Loquanto. The public comment period is an opportunity for parents and other concerned parties to make brief presentations to the school committee on pertinent school issues. Questions on specific school matters are not answered at this time, but are referred to the superintendent for a later response. Questions on specific policy matters are not answered at this time, but may be the subject of later discussion by the committee. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak and I'll remind you when you have one minute remaining and then 30 seconds. Those who require interpretation services will be allotted additional two minutes. Speakers may not reassign their time to others. Large groups addressing the same topic are encouraged to consolidate their remarks or choose a spokesperson to provide testimony. Written testimony is appreciated and encouraged. Please state your name and affiliation before you begin. TV cameras are only cord speakers who face the committee. We have eight speakers this evening and we'll begin with Alabarth Elise, followed by Pernell Banks and Mosic Hakobian.
My name is Alabarth Elise. I'm an SEI K-2 inclusion teacher at the Higginson in Roxbury. I have worked at the Higginson since the time it reopened five years ago. The Higginson School is a K-2 full inclusion school and it operates in a almost 100-year-old facility. When it opened in 1923, nearby streets were not paved, the building site featured a coal pocket and an eight-foot-deep manure pit. There were more horses than cars then. Flash forward 95 years and although there is no manure pit or coal pocket and the streets are paved currently, we have many deficiencies within our school building. The building and the two-level playground is inaccessible to our students with disabilities. Build BPS has rated the school's learning environment and spaces as poor in terms of the school's educational facilities effectiveness. Our students deserve better. To be in Boston, one of the nation's leading school districts, it is shameful that our facility at the Higginson School is not equipped to meet our students' basic needs. We can make the playground fully accessible now without waiting on the timeline of Build BPS. The playground is consistent with the vision of Build BPS Plan and with the five, and five of the Build BPS's 10 principles, which are leveraging real-time facility assessment data to prompt and validate investment choices, creating school environments that promote student and staff safety and well-being, aligning building capacity to enrollment and demographic trends citywide, improving the match between educational programs and their families, and focusing new school construction primarily in high-growth neighborhoods with unlimited options for site expansion. Based on current demographic trends, Build BPS projects that the neighborhoods surrounding the school will be home to the larger, to larger Boston households. We currently have a vacant rehabilitation building that's across the street from our school that will, in the next few years, be developed and will house over 300 apartment condo units. So currently we require, and so there will be more seats that will be required, so our school will be in need. The proposed playground is aligned with Build BPS priorities in terms of incenting innovation and building a culture of change that generates new solutions at every level of BPS, from classrooms to schools and to the central office and the community at large. I want to add my thanks to Superintendent Chang for your consideration of support for this project, to Mr. Hamlin and Mr. Consalvo for their assistance and guidance. As the Higginson community, we really hope that you guys can help us to push our, to help us push for a playground. We really need this playground for our students. I thank you guys and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Pernell Banks and he'll be followed by Mosic Hakobian and Gaitra Levett.
Good evening.
Thank you. My name is Pernell Banks and I'm a proud parent of two students at the Henry Higginson Full Inclusion School. The school opened five years ago and has an enrollment of 171 students, three to eight years of age, in K-0 to second grade. As you heard from students, parents, and staff, and Principal Mullin, during the last three school committee meetings, the school's outdoor play area consists of two asphalt slabs in urgent need of a safe playground. Due to the hard surface and lack of any safe equipment, the children are not only denied the full opportunity for gross motor activity, but minor injuries scrapes our routine occurrences. Boston Higher Ground is a community partner and provides support by connecting the school to available programs and resources. Higher Ground has included the Higginson K-2 as one of seven schools in a new pilot program designed to house homeless families with children in our school and within the next 18 months and connect these families to needed services. In the past years, Higher Ground has bought to the schools the services of Friends of the Children, Boston Architectural College, and Families First parenting programs. Parent teachers and our principal have been requesting a safe playground since the school opened. The Community Preservation Program, available for the first time this year, is ideal funding source to address this need. The entire school committee is in support of the project and has been involved in designing it. The students have helped by drawing sketches of what they would like to see included and have advocated for support by testifying before the school committee. The Community Preservation Proposals due Friday, April 27th, and to be competitive, we need to show, we need to show BPS support and City of Boston support. We have requested support letters from Superintendent Chang, which we would like to include in this proposal. We have also met with the Chief of Staff, Robert Consalvo, and BPS Chief, our Operating Officer, John Hamlin, who has been working hard to secure approval by the City of Boston for the proposed project and has been coordinating the legal review of the agreement that would enable Higher Ground to coordinate this much-needed project. We appreciate very much Mr. Hamlin's and Mr. Consalvo's efforts on our behalf. The completed program would be a great new resource for the school as for the surrounding community. We are confident that with your support and the community preservation funding, we can complete this project by early fall 2018 so children can have the benefit of playground for the coming school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mosic Hakobian, I'm the Director of Boston's Higher Ground.
We have been partnering with the Higginson K-2 School since they opened five or six years ago, as well as three other schools in the neighborhood. We are currently coordinating a capital improvements project at the Crispus Adams Children's Center, which is nearby, on a 1.8 to 2.8 million dollar project that's about to start. I will be coordinating this project on behalf of Higher Ground. I've had more than 40 years of experience doing affordable housing and community facilities development, including the Rusin Center at Eggleston Square that houses the Greater Eggleston Community High School. We've also, during my time at Urban Edge, built a couple of playgrounds, several playgrounds, two of them on publicly owned land with licenses granted by PFD. The Higginson Playground is designed by a local architect, Ray Dunets, who's had experience doing school playgrounds at Mission Hill High School in Jamaica Plain, Murphy School in Dorchester, Patrick Henry School in East Boston, International School of Boston in Cambridge, and Pierce School Playground in Brookline. So he knows what's acceptable and complimentary at BPS. The playground will be built by Chris Crosswinds Enterprises, which is one of the most productive local construction companies. Their office is on Humboldt Avenue, a few blocks from the playground site. Interestingly enough, one of the partners, Arnold Johnson, who's now a grandfather, was himself formerly a student at the Higginson School. So for him, this is a very nice homecoming. Any work that we do at this playground will be subject to BPS and PFD and other agency approvals. We've already shared with Mr. Hamlin the initial schematic of the playground and will continue to provide progress copies as we proceed. Use of the $500,000 grant from Community Preservation that we are asking for and allowing a community partner to build the facility makes it possible for this playground to be built in months rather than years, which is what the normal process would be if it went through the city's capital plan. At Chairman Loquanta's request to Principal Mullin, we've included a copy of the information about the Community Preservation Program. And as you will see in the schedule at the front, recommendations for the grants are going to be made in early June to the Mayor and City Council and the agreements for the grants are going to be signed, are scheduled to be signed by July 1st. Our goal is to be ready to go into construction in August and have it done by September or October at the latest so the children can benefit from the playground for most of the school years. So all of us at Higher Ground are committed to helping make this happen. I think with your support, we look forward to you joining us at the ribbon cutting in September or October. So appreciate anything you can do. And I also want to add my thanks to both Rob and John. I know they're working very hard to get us the legal review approval to actually coordinate this project on city-owned land, but I think there's precedent for it, so I hope we'll be able to get past that hurdle soon. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our next speaker is Gaitra Levett and she'll be followed by Andrew Manning and Jonathan Maltez.
Good day to you all.
Good evening.
I am a proud mom of six, five, have graduated and went on to college, but I have one child that I was about to give up on, and then I found Dorchester Academy. The first time I went there, I wanted no parts of Dorchester Academy. But one of the teachers that's here today, Ms. Reese, kept telling me to just be patient and hold on. And when I went back two to three months later, I actually thought they had changed the school and just didn't tell me. Because it was just a remarkable thing to see that how the kids were interacting with the kids, the students, the teachers, and the teachers were interacting with the teachers. They trust the teachers. My daughters can talk to the teachers about anything, things that I, that she don't even talk to me about. The staff is always at arm's reach when I call there, they respond back immediately. Some kids outgrow high school before they are out of high school. I just want to know what happens to those kids when this school is gone. That's what I want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andrew Manning and he'll be followed by Jonathan Maltez and Maggie Reese.
Good evening.
I'm Andrew Manning, ELA Humanities Teacher at Dorchester Academy. I apologize, I have a cold, so I'm going to read off some prepared remarks, but I thought it was important that I come and speak in front of the committee as a witness to the great work that was done at Dorchester Academy this year. I've been teaching Humanities at Dorchester Academy since 2015 and there is no doubt that we faced challenges and failed to meet the state's guidelines as a Level 4 school. During my first two years at Dorchester Academy, I watched as we failed to implement effective alternative strategies for the most at-risk youth in our community. I witnessed the failure of leadership to provide supports to teachers and staff that would have allowed us to impact these students' lives. Major mistakes were made, which as we all know now, led to the dismissal of some very talented and dedicated staff and to the transfer of many students who desperately needed our help. These students did not fail us, we failed them. We failed to meet these students where they were, we failed to support their social emotional learning, we failed to make learning relevant and reengage them in their own success, we failed to lead with compassion, and failed to create an alternative learning environment that worked. This year, under the leadership of Headmaster Fuentes and our Senior Program Director, Ms. Reese, and with the support of Ms. Noriega and Superintendent Chang, among others, we saw what an impact truly alternative education can have when teachers and students are given the supports they need, when a culture of safety and success is maintained, and when high expectations and achievement are celebrated. We have seen students grow under this environment this year. We watched 10 seniors graduate in December and another group preparing to finish this June. Most of our graduates will be attending college, others are entering training programs to prepare them for careers. The level of success we have witnessed this year would have been unthinkable in the past, and I thank all of you for allowing us the opportunity to help these young people achieve these goals this year. Under the leadership of Mr. Fuentes and Ms. Reese, we were empowered to engage students through compassion and creativity. As a professional, it was the most rewarding year I have been a part of at any school, and I thank both Ms. Reese and Mr. Fuentes for their unwavering support and belief in our team. As we teach our students, all growth comes from failure, and we witnessed that growth this year, both as professionals and in our students, and are excited to continue that growth by providing alternative options. The end of the school year will mark the end of Dorchester County, but will not mark the end of the growing need for alternative education in our city, and with your support, it will not end our mission of providing authentic alternative options to ensure the success of all of our cities' students. Thank you.
Mr. Manning, Mr. Manning, if I could just hold you for a second, I wanted to make sure that we recognize that you're one of the finalists for educator of the year in Boston. We heard about earlier, and we want to of course recognize, recognize your great contributions to our children. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jonathan Maltez. He'll be followed by Maggie Reese and Zainab Hussain.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, good evening. My name's Jonathan Maltez. I was a former student of DA. Now I'm attending Benjamin Franklin for the first semester. But last year compared to this year was unbearable. It was I couldn't learn last year, I didn't go to my classes last year. Compared to this year, under Mrs. Fuentes's role, it was a lot better, actually, was able to finish high school. I told myself I wasn't going to be able to go to college. I was never planning to. Fuentes changed that, and he actually convinced me to go and to go in there for automotive, which is what I did. But what I read in the newspapers last year compared to this year, it was it was different. Fuentes definitely made a change, and although I can never repay him for that, but I could only say thank you because now I am in college and I'm probably gonna be finishing soon. But that's all I really had to say, so thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. And good luck in your education.
Our next speaker is Maggie Reese, followed by Zainab Hussain.
Good evening.
Good evening, school committee members. Good evening, Superintendent Chang. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I wanted to talk to you about last year, actually, this year, beginning of the year, when I first started. I usually come into schools, I came from Fall, where I was there for a couple of years, and I've been in Boston public schools probably for about twenty-three years. They call me the cleanup guy, so I go in and I'll clean up the schools, you know, the kids that are having issues. But alternative education is my life, and it will always be my life. It's something that I believe in, something that I cherish. I cherish these young people, I cherish their lives, I cherish their families. Okay, I interact with their families, I interact with the students, I understand the students. And in all the years that I've been in alternative ed, I've lost sixty students to death. So imagine, you know, dealing with the gang unit in Matapan and being told on Monday morning that I had to stand in front of the whole entire school and tell six hundred kids from Boston Adult Technical Academy that their friend had died. Was the toughest thing that I ever had to do. And help these parents that couldn't afford to bury their children through victim compensation. Yes, I helped all those parents bury their children. And it was an emotional thing, and they still see me and I still see them. And what was interesting when going into Dorchester Academy is that I knew the students, their families. And some of the kids said to me, Ms. Reese, you became famous in the hood. Do you understand what I mean? That I became famous where it it's not about fame, it's about the love and the love that you give these children, that you can make them do anything you want them to do, okay? Just by greeting them at the door and then telling them that you love them every single solitary day. What's wrong? Why are we not doing that? Why are educators are not doing that? Why are we not greeting these kids at the door every single day and asking them if they're hungry, if they're okay? That's important. And when I walked in Dorchester Academy, I'm not gonna lie to you, it was a complete disaster. And I wasn't gonna let these young people fail. And they looked at me, and some of them thought I was a nutcase. And I said, you know what? You can keep on thinking I'm nuts because I'm not gonna give up on you because this is how we do things around here. I don't go to your house and I don't put my feet on your table, and you're not gonna do that here. This is our home, okay, and we're gonna you're gonna leave with high expectations, and we're gonna transition you into being leaders. And is that all the time I have? Okay, okay. But I wanted to say just a few things. It's been an experience. I want to thank Mr. Fuentes, I want to thank Dr. Chang, Donna Muncy, Ms. LaHia Noriega that I am now under her leadership, but it's like a badge of honor. I want to thank all the young people from Dorchester Academy that believed in my vision to make that school change and their families, and I want to thank you for giving me the time to speak. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Reese.
Good evening. My name is Zainab Hussain. I am here on to represent the residents of Harbor Point. The residents of Harbor Point. Harbor Point is a residential complex of about three thousand residents with approximately three hundred and seventeen youth between the ages of five and seventeen. There's three hundred and seventeen youths come from subsidized families under Section Eight. Harbor Point used to be known as Columbia Point, one of the worst public housing developments in the country. Harbor Point is located on a fifty-acre parcel with one thousand two hundred eighty-eight units, which four hundred are subsidized. Today, Harbor Point is known as one of the most successful mixed-income communities in the nation, a place that provides an outstanding quality of life for its residents and neighbors. Currently, we have many of our youth attending the endeavor in McCormick School. Many alumni have moved on to exam schools as well as private schools, eventually entering prestigious universities throughout the country. Focusing on the McCormick Middle School, it is important to note that the resources and facilities offered at the school have contributed to the success of many students. Having an open athletic field has positively impacted the health and academic performance of these students. It is an asset to the entire community. After school hours, it is open to the entire community for softball, soccer, cricket, basketball, volleyball, among other activities. In the wintertime, the community uses the space for cross-country skiing, as long as snow is on the ground, that is. Also, there is a playground for hops as well as hopscotch and foursquare for the little ones to enjoy. Voting in favor of DND's proposal would be denying access to an asset that has provided a positive environment to the McCormick Endeavor School as well as the entire Columbia Point Peninsula. Open space playing fields are so limited in the city of Boston, it makes no sense to take this essential asset away from those that live, study, and work in the Columbia Point Peninsula. We ask this committee respectfully to allow us to make a formal presentation during one of your upcoming meetings on a reconstruction design geared towards improving the McCormick Athletic Field. I would also like to note that this personally applies to me because I am an alumni of the McCormick Middle School. I am a resident of the area. I have I come from a large family who are also students there. And you can learn math, literacy, everything in the classroom, but it's only on the field that you can learn about values like teamwork. It actually allowed me to go back and pursue coaching the middle school soccer team, and I wouldn't have been able to do any of that if it wasn't for having the environment to support that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hussain.
Mr. LaCanto, that concludes our speakers for public comment.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our first action item this evening is grants for approval totaling one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. I'll now open it up to questions or discussion from the committee. Hearing no questions, I just had a couple that I notes that I wanted to make about the grants. First one is the Reading Recovery Grant that is on the docket for approval tonight. That's a state grant in in total of about fifty thousand dollars or so, but I want to take a moment and highlight for the community that is listening tonight that that state grant is greatly supplemented by the Liberty Mutual Foundation. For a couple of years now, it was recently renewed just last year, a hundred thousand dollar grant pays for the professional development for our reading recovery specialists in Boston Public Schools, and so we thank Liberty Mutual for that support. The other item was, I noticed there is a second grant on for approval tonight for boosting STEM learning, particularly at Madison Park Technical Vocational High School. And I see Ms. LaHia Noriega from our high school's office, as well as Executive Director McCaskill is here. I wonder if you might be able to approach the the microphones this evening and just tell us a little bit more about what the intent is for that grant. And in particular, I noticed one of the items that the grant is intended to fund is the creation of a new AP Biology class at the school, which sounds very exciting.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Superintendent, distinguished board members, good evening. And this grant, it actually has five components, and just to touch upon, Mr. LaCanto, your of the AP is definitely to expand the biology program and enhance the AP, the introduction of an AP Biology course primarily for our allied health program, which consists of the health assisting, medical assisting, as well as the dental assisting program. And as folks may not know, science is sometimes a gatekeeper course for some of our allied health students, and I think the enhancement of this would be truly remarkable and truly a benefit for those students.
And is this an extension of an existing course?
It's an we're adding we're adding it, we're adding it on for this year, for this upcoming year.
Yep. And was this a competitive grant you had to go out and apply for?
It's thanks to State Representative Ivan Joe Cavial, who is a former Madison Park graduate, who really was the catalyst and impetus for this grant.
Well, that's excellent. I really just deeply appreciate having you in front of us at any opportunity, and particularly to highlight some of the good things that are going on in Madison Park, and certainly with the conversation this committee's had on a number of occasions about trying to boost up not only offerings on advanced placement courses across the district, just but just create a more consistent offering of those courses across the district, especially outside of our exam schools. It's really heartening to know that this money's going to good use and for that purpose.
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments for discussion from the committee? Well, thank you very much, and I appreciate you taking time out to speak to us tonight. If there's no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the grant as presented. Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Is there any discussion or objection? Any objection to approving the grants by unanimous consent? Hearing none, the grants are approved. Thank you. Our next action item is a request for interim salary and non-personnel payments on external funds. You'll recall that the superintendent presented this proposal at our last meeting, and at this time, I'd like to invite the superintendent to make any final comments.
Just a reminder, this is a standard procedure for the school committee. We have a new here to answer any questions. Any further questions that you may have?
All right, thank you, Superintendent. I thank Member O'Neill once again for starting this practice earlier in his tenure as chair. If I'm not if I'm not mistaken.
I think it's gone even before me.
Okay, well, thanks for carrying it on in that case.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from the committee? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the request as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Second from Dr. Coleman, thank you. Is there any discussion or objection? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Our next action item is a collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee and Local Union nineteen fifty-two, the Painters and Allied Trades District Council thirty-five, also known as the Custodians. You will recall that Jeremiah Hassan, our interim director for labor relations, presented the tentative agreement to the committee at our last meeting, at which time he also shared the superintendent's request for supplemental appropriation in the amount of one million thirteen thousand dollars and two hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars, excuse me, to support the cost of the agreement. I'm going to ask the committee to take up those two issues separately tonight with two separate votes. First, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Tommy Chang once again for any final comments.
Yeah, just a quick reminder, this contract will lead to increased wages and additional salary steps for employees along with training fund and legal fund and housing trust for our custodians. It also provides increased flexibility to ensure that we are addressing the appropriate staffing levels needed in some of our more complex buildings, and it gives us some flexibility to make sure that we are staff appropriately during some crucial summer months. I believe all sides are very happy with this agreement, and they have also our custodians have also already passed this. And I just want to point out, local District Council thirty-five, they're great partners at Madison Park, and earlier this year, we were able to make an announcement of a partnership between District Council thirty-five and Madison Park for young people to go through Madison Park and actually obtain jobs at the end, and they're providing a university to provide appropriate certifications for the young people at Madison Park as well. So hopefully, this the school committee approves this contract this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'll open it up to questions or discussion from the committee.
I will simply say, I applaud the superintendent reaching agreement with this union. Custodians provide a vital role in making our schools safe and clean. We all know it when we visit schools, if it's a clean school, and, you know, it goes towards our students' health and being in a position to learn, just like our food service workers and our nurses, et cetera. They're all part of the team in making it happen for our students to be in a position to learn. So I'm delighted we're in a good position with these custodians and glad we have flexibility coming up. Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Any other further questions or comments? Well, hearing none, is there a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee and Local Union nineteen fifty-two, Painters and Allied Trades District Council number thirty-five, also known as the Custodians?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Second from Dr. Coleman. Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll on the CBA?
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I'll now entertain a second motion to approve a supplemental appropriation request to the Boston City Council on the amount of one million thirteen thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars to support the collective bargaining agreement between the Boston School Committee and Local Union nineteen fifty-two, Painters and Allied Trades District Council number thirty-five as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neill. Is there any discussion or objection? Ms. Sullivan, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Oliver Davila?
Yes.
Mr. O'Neill?
Yes.
Dr. Coleman?
Yes.
Mr. LaCanto?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sullivan, and thank you again to Mr. Hassan, who's here with us tonight from the Office of Labor Relations, as well as our president of Local Union nineteen fifty-two. We're very happy for you, and we appreciate your continued work.
Mr. Chair, may I just ask a quick question?
Mr. O'Neill, yes, please.
Before we move forward, and I apologize because I missed last week's presentation. With this now approved by us, Superintendent, how many collective bargaining agreements are still outstanding now? And I also noticed this pushes us ahead, since this goes through fiscal year nineteen, so this pushes ahead of some of our larger agreements. So just how many more do we have outstanding at this point?
Let me get you the exact number. Do you know it off the top of your head, Jeremiah?
I believe we have eight outstanding, with a couple that should be finishing up pretty soon.
Okay, we will make sure we verify that.
Okay, great, thank you.
Our interim legal head, labor head, is saying eight.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for your question, Mr. O'Neill, and I think it would be appropriate for us to get a an email that has a schedule of all those outstanding collective bargaining agreements.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on now to our first report, the twenty seventeen results of the National Assessment of Educational Progress, also known as NAEP. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Nicole Wagner Lamb, executive director of the Office of Data and Accountability, to please step forward with her presentation. First, I'll turn it over to our superintendent for her report, for, excuse me, for opening comments.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Wagner, for coming this evening. Ms. Wagner, today will highlight the district's results in the twenty seventeen NAEP, which is, again, the National Assessment of Educational Progress. I mentioned some of the highlights during the superintendent's remarks today, but in a nutshell, in fourth grade reading and math, BPS performance held
With this now approved by us, Superintendent, how many collective bargaining agreements are still outstanding now? And I also noticed this pushes us ahead, since this goes through fiscal year 19, so this pushes ahead of some of our larger agreements. So just, how many more do we have outstanding at this point?
Let me get you the exact number. Do you know off the top of your head, Jeremiah?
I believe we have eight outstanding, with a couple that should be finishing up pretty soon.
Okay, we will make sure we verify that.
Okay, great, thank you.
But our interim legal head, labor head, is saying eight.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for your question, Mr. O'Neill, and I think it would be appropriate for us to get an email that has a schedule of all those outstanding collective bargaining agreements.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on now to our first report, the 2017 Results of the National Assessment of Educational Progress, also known as NAEP. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Nicole Wagner Lamb, Executive Director of the Office of Data and Accountability, to please step forward with her presentation. First, I'll turn it over to our superintendent for her report, for, excuse me, for opening comments.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner, for coming this evening. Ms. Wagner, today will highlight the district's results in the 2017 NAEP, which is, again, the National Assessment of Educational Progress. I mentioned some of the highlights during the superintendent's remarks today, but in a nutshell, in fourth grade reading and math, BPS performance held steady as compared to 2015, including remaining in par with the national average in eighth grade mathematics. In eighth grade reading, however, BPS is one of only two TUDA districts, which is the Trial Urban District Assessment. These are urban school districts across the country. We were one of two that made statistically significant improvement in this area. In fourth and eighth grade math, BPS performance was a key set of, with a key set of student subgroups, was statistically equivalent or higher than the national average in larger cities as well, as I acknowledged earlier. While we do perform fairly well compared to other school districts here, we still have persistent achievement gaps that we have to tackle. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Lamb.
Thank you, Dr. Chang. Good evening, members of the school committee, Chairman LaCanto, Dr. Chang, thanks very much for having me here this evening to present, as Dr. Chang shared, on really the most recent data that we have about BPS's performance. And it has recently been released, not only for BPS, but for other urban school districts throughout the country. Really, all the states across the country are involved in having students take this important assessment called the National Assessment for Educational Progress. As Dr. Chang shared, this assessment is also commonly known as the nation's report card, and is widely accepted as the assess, an assessment of exemplary quality that helps us to understand how students in states all across the country are progressing towards college and career readiness standards and skills. But it also allows us to have an opportunity to be compared to other school districts who have a uniquely densely populated urban population in urban centers here in the U.S., and how our students are progressing towards these same measures. So as you can see here, and I think you all are aware, BPS is one of 10 school districts who, urban school districts specifically, who volunteered to participate in the Trial for Urban District Assessment Program back in 2003. And this program employs the NAEP assessment itself to compare participating urban districts to each other and track progress over time. Since 2003, BPS has demonstrated a long history of being one of the highest performing urban school districts in the country. In 2017 specifically, you can see that there were actually 27 participating TUDA districts, or urban school districts, as part of this program, and in grade four, Boston scored equivalent or higher to 20 of these participating TUDA districts, and only scored lower than six of the school districts in grade four reading. In grade four mathematics, Boston scored equivalent or higher to, or than 19 of the TUDA districts, and only scored lower than seven. When we move to eighth grade reading, which is in the lower left-hand corner of this slide, you can see that Boston scored equivalent or higher than all 26 other participating TUDA school districts, which is really something to be proud of. And in grade eight mathematics, Boston scored equivalent to or higher than 25 of the participating TUDA districts, leaving only one that we, that we performed lower than. So as you can see, we are participating in a nationally renowned program, and just as a reminder, this program specifically assesses students in grades four and eight, reading and mathematics, but does not assess all students in the school district or in the state that's participating. It actually uses a very sophisticated statistical sampling technique to assess just a very representative set of students here in BPS, as well as across the country, so that we can actually extrapolate and understand how all students in the population would have performed had they all been given the assessment, and so that we can basically learn about what students here in BPS, as well as throughout the country, are able to learn and what they're able to perform and do in these specific grades and subjects. I also know that you are aware, but maybe not everyone is, that in the last several years, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has employed two new assessments for students in grades four, just over the past two years. And so these assessments were the Park Assessment, and then most recently, the Next Generation MCAS Assessment, and these assessments have been developed and administered to similarly measure what students in Massachusetts know and can do as compared to our college and career readiness standards that we have for all students in the state. The challenge that we run into, though, here in the state of Massachusetts, as we've had a few different assessments in just a short period of time, is that it makes it very difficult for us to gauge how we are progressing as a school district, and even how the state is progressing, in terms of the impact of what we are doing and the new programs that we provide to students and what those, what the impacts are for students. However, it's exciting to see that NAEP actually gives us, this NAEP assessment gives us data that we really can track longitudinally, and so we do have that data since 2015 for the same assessment, and here again in 2017, which was basically the time period in which the Park Assessment and Next Generation assessments were being piloted and administered. It's also worth noting that at the same time as Massachusetts was gradually transitioning, or still is gradually transitioning, to all online computer-based assessments, NAEP was doing the same thing, and so in 2017, students took these assessments as digital-based assessments. So as you can see on this slide, it's really important to point out that when we compare the results of students here in Boston Public Schools, and how they did on the NAEP assessment in 2017 versus how students did on the Next Generation MCAS Assessment, which is this new assessment that I just described, that is only given here in the state of Massachusetts, that the results are highly comparable. So as you can see here, in grade four and eight reading, and four and eight mathematics, when you look at the proportion of students who are either proficient or meeting expectations or advanced and exceeding expectations, these are the students that are above the dotted blue line, that they're highly comparable between these two assessments. So I think that we should really find the comparability of these assessment results to be very heartening. It helps us to be confident that the Next Generation MCAS Assessment that our students are taking in each grade and subject, and all of our students are taking, as opposed to just a smaller sample, that it really is assessing largely the same skills, content, and level of rigor as our nation's report card. So now I move on to Boston's specific results in the most recent year. And so as you can see here, we just basically summarized for grades four and eight reading and mathematics, some short-term trends, some long-term trends, and we've also highlighted some comparisons between how BPS does versus other large cities. And when I describe the large cities a little bit more detail, you'll see that there's a distinction between the large city sample and the other TUDA districts that have participated in the urban district program. But we also have a comparison here for, between Boston and the complete, or the entire national sample. And it's important to point out that the folks who administer the NAEP assessment, and here in Boston Public Schools as well, we really hold fast to this kind of statistical significance testing that's used to make sure that we can feel really confident in the results of these assessments, and that the, that the average scaled scores, which is really the unit of measure here in the NAEP assessment, that it is truly a strong measure of what we think the population's average score would be, even if not all students in the grade four and eight were actually assessed. And so here, we're really just pointing out any differences or trends that are considered statistically significant, meaning that they've sort of passed that statistical test of, yes, you know, this is really meaningful, we're having an upward trend, or we're having, not an upward trend, maybe a downward trend. And that's why sometimes you'll see that there are some, some numbers here on this screen, you know, for example, that in fourth grade mathematics, maybe in the short term, between 2015 and 2017, that we had an average three-point decline, but that our statistical sampling methods, or statistical significance testing methods show that that's not a meaningful difference, that that difference is not something that we can feel confident in, and that the precision on that difference is, is not something that we, that we think is meaningful. But we do have a lot of meaningful differences here, and so I just want to draw your attention to the fact that Boston Public Schools, in the long term, between 2003 and 2017, which is as long as BPS has participated in the TUDA program, has been trending upwards on every one of these domains. Between nine and almost 20 scaled score points, we, we've gained in terms of how students are performing in reading and mathematics. In the most recent, a short-term trend between 2015 and 2017, as Dr. Chang mentioned, we had one area where we really saw a meaningful improvement, and that was eighth grade reading. And we're one of only two TUDA districts that showed that same meaningfully, meaningful improvement. In the other areas, we held steady, and that's something to celebrate as well, because there were a number of TUDA districts that you'll see this at the end of the presentation that had declines, and we did not, we did not show any declines in these past couple of years, so we're holding steady. As compared to the large city sample, Boston Public Schools, on average, sits above the large city sample, meaning that in comparison to all other cities in the, in the United States that have 150,000 students or more, I'm sorry, 150,000 people or more, many of which are very different populations than our urban districts, they may be suburban, they may be, you know, even, yeah, so they, they don't, they're not necessarily urban districts. We, we outperform this sample on average. However, in comparison to the nation as a whole, Boston Public Schools, like a lot of urban school districts, has not quite yet met that national average. We have not necessarily caught up to the national average. The one place where we have caught up to the national average was in eighth grade mathematics. We actually caught up to the national average in 2015, as you may remember, and while we've seen, you know, what looks to be a little incremental decline since then, the statistical testing that we've been able to perform shows that that's not a meaningful difference, and so we've held steady in grade eight mathematics. Here, we're going to get into even more detailed data, and I'll try not to go through every number with you, but as you can see, we're highlighting the performance of students in a couple of racial subgroups, specifically African-American, Black students, Hispanic, Latino students, and we're even drawing some connections in terms of how they perform relative to white students here in BPS. And you can see that we have both long and short-term trends for these students in fourth grade and eighth grade reading and mathematics. And what you find is that in the long term, since 2003, and this is true in the other TUDA districts, sort of on average, as well as across the nation, we've really seen great gains for our African-American and Black students, and Hispanic or Latino students. So that's really exciting, is that there have been gains. But in the more recent years, it really appears as if those gains have sort of started to peter off and stagnate a bit, and so I think it is a really important question for us to ask ourselves, why is this happening here in Boston? Why is this happening sort of nationally? You can also see that we've calculated the gaps between Black and White students and Hispanic and White students, and those gaps have persisted. Since 2003, there have been really very significant gaps. And so the, the symbols that you see there in the gap columns, when it says equals, it doesn't mean that the performance of these students are equal. Those, those gaps are real, and they're very significant. It just means that the gaps have not meaningfully grown over the past, you know, 10 or 15 years. And in one area, though, we do see that there has been sort of a growth in the gap, and that's in eighth grade mathematics. So I also want to highlight the performance of some other subgroups. We all, in our formal report that's online, you can see it, and I think you all have, in depth, we, we show analysis for our low-income students, English learners, students with disabilities, male and female students. And as you can see, in the long term, again, for all of these different sub, for, in most cases, the long-term trends are very positive. Since 2003, we've really made gains with all these different subgroups. And it's also very important to mention that relative to the other TUDA districts or urban districts, as well as the large city sample and the national average, Boston Public Schools either performs on par equivalently or better than their peers with these different, with these subgroups consistently. However, you do see that in the short term, we've largely remained steady with these subgroups of students. So, so we, we haven't necessarily, in some areas, you can see that the short-term, there was actually short-term progress, but that that progress hasn't necessarily been able to show a statistically significant gain. And finally, we're going to break the data out for students at different points in sort of the performance distribution, and so the way that we do this is by looking at statistically significant performance trends by percentile bands. So students who are at the 90th percentile, 75th, 50th percentile, 25th percentile, and 10th percentile. And you can see in both fourth grade math and eighth grade math, that we've really shown strong long-term gains for students at all points in the distribution. Even our lower-performing students have, on average, really shown statistically significant gains. However, you know, and this is a national trend as well, in reading, we see that students in the 10th and 25th percentile don't appear to have made the same kind of gains, that they're, that, that, that we see real performance gains for the, the higher sort of performing students on average, but the, those students who are our lowest-performing students may not be sort of getting the same benefits or, or sort of bumps in their scores over time. And so how does this fit into the national context? Well, as I think Dr. Chang alluded to, nationally, we see that in fourth grade reading and fourth and eighth grade mathematics, scores remained relatively unchanged nationally between 2015 and 2017, which is sort of our short-term horizon that we've been looking at. However, average scores in eighth grade reading did improve nationally, and Boston Public Schools and one other urban school district are the only two urban school districts to show that exact same trend, which is that we're really showing statistically significant improvements in eighth grade reading. Unfortunately, average scores for students at the higher percentile bands, or fortunately, they improved at the higher percentile bands nationally, but what's unfortunate is that scores for students at the lower percentile bands declined or remained unchanged. And so we do see that there's a bit of a widening of the gap for students, even at the national level. This last slide, I know it's a lot of data, but it at least gives you, and it gives the public, a reference point for where Boston sits relative to the other school districts that are part of this TUDA or urban school district program. And so you can see, all the way off to the right, eighth grade reading is the area where we've shown both short-term gains here between 2017, 2015 and 2017, as well as longer-term gains over the past decade. But as you can tell, the cells that are highlighted in dark blue are the school districts that showed statistically significant gains. The cells that are highlighted in light blue are school districts that showed statistically significant declines, and Boston does not show any statistically significant declines, either in the short term or in the sort of decade-long trajectory that they show here. So there, there's a lot to be proud of here, but as Dr. Chang shared, there is definitely still progress that we need to make as a district, and, and so a lot to celebrate, but definitely some questions still to be asked. We'd be happy to take your questions at this time.
Well, thank you, Ms. Wagner Lamb. I'll open it up now to the committee for questions and discussion. Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. So I have a quick question for you on slide, I'm sorry, it's not numbered.
Oh.
This one that says statistically significant trends, and this is where you compare us of short-term, long-term, and then large-city comparison and national comparison, and you say, in the two right-hand columns, 2017 large-city comparison and 2017 national comparison. Are those gains that they, gains and decreases that they show, are they short-term or long-term?
So, so actually, I should be really clear. The right two columns are really not looking at trend data anymore. It's just looking at how BPS performed in 2017 versus the large-city comparison.
So we were four points higher in fourth grade reading compared to
Absolutely.
Large-city in 2017.
Yep, that's the right interpretation.
And four points under the national average. Okay, great.
That's the right interpretation. That's right.
Okay. Thank you. And, you know, this is really important data, because this is the only test we have. People like to focus in on MCAS, and, you know, love to compare us in Massachusetts. This is the only, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the only data we have of how we're doing national?
Oh, that's true. It's the only data that we can look at where we can compare ourselves to the nation, but it's also the only data that we have over the past three years or so that's consistent for BPS. So it, you know, because we've had such
Because of the change from MCAS to Park, et cetera?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. And also, you know, when we look at how we're doing the, this first slide that you had, a fourth-grade reading, math, et cetera, and how we scored higher than other districts, I want to point out, and correct me if I'm wrong, that particularly with these green figures that were, you know, higher than 20, higher than 19, higher than 26, higher than 25, in every case, the other cities that have done well are almost cherry-picked. They're on one of these four. Boston is really the only one that is consistently doing well across all four categories. Is that true?
I think that that is somewhat true. We do have some school districts that have joined TUTA more recently that are county-based school districts, and some of them also do perform pretty well in some of these, you know, in a number of these areas.
Charlotte Mecklenburg does pretty well.
Yes, that's an example.
Austin does pretty well.
Right, yeah.
DC and Cleveland have seen large gains, but they were starting from very small bases.
That's true.
We are consistently very high, and we're very high across all four. So I mean, this is, you know, we beat ourselves up, but every once in a while, we're going to stop and say, hey, compared to our national peers, we're doing pretty darn well. And I know Superintendent, you are working on a task force, I believe, that looks at this data, right? On a national basis?
Correct. I'm one of two superintendents that sits on the TUTA task force on behalf of the Council of Creative Schools.
Okay. So I think this is fantastic, that we're doing great. What is the key area that we, that this says to you, we need to continue to focus, besides the achievement gap numbers that jump out loud and clear? But what else, Superintendent, how would you look at this data and try to change your practice in our schools to improve our students' academic performance?
Yeah. I am, I am concerned about, in our lower grades, there seems to be some stagnation in terms of performance. We need to make sure we continue focusing on the cognitive rigor of what young people are doing as in their early grades. We celebrate our early, our early education programming in BPS. It is nationally recognized. I think our next big step in that work is making sure that the young people have access to play, have access to texts, great texts, but they also need to be using those texts to make arguments, to be able to make constructive responses. That type of work needs to continue. I also have Dr. Tran here to provide some insights as well, in terms of the work that we need to continue doing. But for me, I am really focusing on kind of fourth and eighth grade, and a fourth, fourth grade reading and math, like some level of stagnation, or at least in area to improve upon, given that we, we're not as high in terms of performance compared to other districts as compared to eighth grade.
And over this past year, we've launched a new second-grade curriculum in order to form a meaningful bridge between our highly-successful early childhood work into what we feel is a really strong three-through-five program, which is anchored by the Expeditionary Learning Curriculum, which I think people recognize as being quite rigorous, really grounded in, in rich, complex texts. And the second grade has been rolled out in 73 classrooms this year, and will be expanded to an additional 60 classrooms next year. And so we believe that that, and it's also rooted in many of the same texts and activities, rigorous, cognitively demanding activities. It formed the foundation of the three-through-five curriculum. And so we feel like we're really tying the two ends of the continuum together that we think will lead to, you know, some additional gains going into fifth and beyond.
Thank you, and thank you for those answers, because many parents say to us, why do we need so many tests? And teachers say it as well. And so unless we can not just say, well, we use this to comparison to other large cities and to other large districts and national averages, but unless we can really clearly say, this is why we do it, because this is what we learn, and this is how it allows us to impact actual academic programs for subsets of our youth or whatever, our youth, it's critical that we be able to show that connection to parents who say, what do we need another test for? But I also like the fact, quite frankly, that this also moved to a computer-based test, because, as you know, this committee had great concerns when MCAS moved to PARC and it was going to become online, and now we had students that had never taken a computer-based test before, teachers who had never given it, connectivity issues, all these things to be worked out. So having this on it as well as a learning experience for our students that they need to have. But unless we can definitively tie that connection, otherwise, we run the risk of people saying, why are we subjecting our students to these tests? So I think it's important that we learn from it and show concrete steps because of it.
Can I add one more thing really quickly? If you look on the slide 10, where it's kind of comparing it to a district, I sit on that task force with Janice Jackson, who's the CEO of Chicago. Chicago and DC have shown some pretty strong gains over the last 10 years. My knowledge of the work in DC is of major investment in professional development in adults, especially around curriculum, especially in most recent years, really doubly, tripling, downing on strong curriculum and training staff, on strong curriculum. And Chicago's been really known for very specific programming, targeting specific groups of kids. We're bringing BAM to Boston. That is a program that started in Chicago. It's a research-based program. I think another important use of all this data is learning from other cities that are doing interesting work, that are closing gaps or at least raising achievement in these particular areas. I don't know. I know you're in networks as well with other districts. Anything to add to that, Dr. Tran?
That's right. I think that I absolutely agree with the focus on a really rich curriculum and then embedded training at the school site, a lot of coaching, a lot of teacher collaboration, very strong protected time, to make sure that teachers have time to work together to think about curriculum and think about what they're going to be teaching. I think in Chicago, in addition to what Dr. Chang mentioned around programming for specific students, I think they've also invested heavily in principal development and have, in addition to that, support for principals, have also matched it with a really strong system for setting very concrete, short- and long-term goals for their principals and working through cycles of data that lead to improvement in principal leadership, but also changes in instruction on the ground. So they've, they've really leaned in on principal support and accountability as a primary lever.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neill. Thank you, Superintendent Chang. Ms. Oliver Davila.
You stole my question, Dr. Chang. I wanted to know nationally, so thank you for answering that. And thank you for the, the robust data. Makes my eyes go like this. I'm curious on, I'm wondering the breakout, if there's any way to look at Asian students? And I know we always think that Asians perform really well, but I know there's subsets, and I'm just wondering if that's going to be possible to look at as well?
So in our appendix, we do have, I'll just kind of show an example, fourth-grade reading, broken out by the different subgroups. I don't, I don't know if you can see it there in front of you.
Sorry, I didn't see it.
It's, it's in the appendix, it's like the second slide in the appendix. Do you have that printed out?
Thank you. I'm sorry if I missed that.
No, it's, it's fine. It's in our report, and it just gets to be very long. But if you're asked, so we do have Asian as a subgroup, and, you know, just in this example with fourth-grade reading, this is a group that has continued to make very steady and sort of accelerated progress. But if your question was, has, have we broken down the data more than, like, just knowing, is a student identified as Asian and knowing a little bit more specifically? That is a luxury we don't quite have with this dataset, because this is a sample that's taken, like, we don't have anything to do with the administration of this assessment, nor the keeping of the data. So breaking out these subgroups into, like, more specific ethnicities is not something that we've been able to do.
Okay. No, that, that was my question, just because I know when we look at different subsets of Asian students, it's not what we, what we stereotype, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure that whatever our strategies are also includes, you know, and obviously, we have a lot of different ethnicities in our district. The other piece, I was just curious, from looking at this data and looking at the eighth-grade, you know, increased reading and math not so good, is what I'm understanding, I'm just wondering if, if you can talk a little bit about how this data kind of informs the college and career readiness piece?
So your question is about sort of distinguishing between how, you know, we did quite well in eighth-grade reading this year. We also have, we're on par with the national average in eighth-grade mathematics, and your question is, what does this kind of tell us about the college and career readiness of our students?
That, and also just, I think if we're having this conversation about, like, the seven to 12, then somehow, you know, what I imagine is, because we keep talking about students aren't doing well in sixth and seventh grade, but then if their reading score goes up, then I just have a question about, like, you know, that, that plan, if, you know, if we do move towards that plan. So I'm just trying to get a sense of how that fits in, and then also what, how, what information we can gather about the college and career, and like, where do we need to focus?
I think there's still a lot to be learned about the interrelation, the correlation between NAEP versus MCAS versus sort of what we consider markers of on-track performance, either leaving eighth grade and going into ninth grade. Because MCAS has been, and where the state assessment has been changing so rapidly, it's hard for us to draw strong inferences between MCAS performance or PARC performance and whether or not a student is going to be successful in high school based on their scores in eighth grade. And the connection between NAEP and those same metrics is also sort of hard to draw. I think your question is a really good one, in that we probably could do more inferences relative to NAEP. Like, are NAEP scores sometimes predictive of how a student will do in ninth grade and then how they do in terms of benchmarks, like high school graduation and college completion? I think it's a worth, it's a worthwhile thing to consider.
Yeah, and I, and I will say, even though we've only given our, well, we're in our second year now of the Next Generation MCAS, I think that, to Donnie's point, there's, I'm excited about being able to study how predictive that assessment is and how aligned it truly is to the NAEP assessment, which has sort of led the way as being a highly rigorous assessment that, that is measuring college and career readiness. As we, as we get more data from Next Generation MCAS, I think it'll be really exciting to think about what the state, what analyses the state's doing, as well as what we're doing around the connection with college and career readiness. You know, and I, I think some of the questions that I would be asking is, you know, so we may be doing sort of well on average with our eighth graders, and that that, that feels, it's good to have those students set up for success, but if we break the data down and we find that it's not all eighth graders that are really doing quite as well, then, then how do we make sure that we're really picking up on that data point before they enter high school and intervening, you know, much earlier to make sure that, that they, that, that all students have that opportunity to really be on track for college and career readiness?
And if I may just add, the TUTA task force is asking that very question right now, and there's an emerging thinking that just measuring eighth-grade reading and math is actually inadequate in
That's where I was going.
...measuring for college and career readiness.
This may not be the, the thing.
It's, it's part of the equation, but there are other assessments that NAEP have created that may actually give us other promising data points as well, other than just reading and math.
Yes, that, that's where I was going. Thank you, Dr. Chang.
Right here, ma'am.
Because I, you know, my daughter's getting ready for MCAS for the first time, and she's a pretty smart kid. Everybody thinks their kid is smart, right? She's a genius. She's brilliant. But she, she does really well. She's like in 90 percentile of her class since, you know, day one. She doesn't get that from me. But just as an example, you know, she, she struggles with math, even though she can do it, but it takes her so much longer. So we've been having this whole slide thing, you know, like flashcards and like every night, and it's stressful, and we're in the car and we're driving, you know, and I just really want, because I'm not crazy about tests, so I, I, my question is, like, what are the other measures? Because we can't measure, you know, if we think every student is going to perform well on test, that's not, that's not true for many, many reasons. Anxiety, you might be, I'm, I'm very slow when I take tests, they make me nervous. I mean, so I, I think, you know, this, that was part of my question, is that this can be one thing, but then what are the other things that we're looking at so that we can measure students in a way that really is validating and can also demonstrate other skills that maybe this doesn't, so.
We will be presenting the updated performance meter to the school committee in about a month, and there is going to be a metrics, there's a, a metrics that we have yet to get to a finish line on, but we're pretty close about college, career, and life readiness. And the coalition of higher ed and K-12 and community programs that have come together to help us figure out, what do we measure? Kind of the emerging thinking there is, it has to be a combination of not only performance on standardized tests, but more importantly, GPA, and we're starting at 2.7 GPA, attendance, participating in after-school and summer programming.
Rigorous coursework.
Rigorous coursework. And while it is not a perfect measure, I think that it's a great starting point for us to look at college, career, and life readiness beyond just through test scores. So
Yes.
That will, we're pretty close to sharing that publicly. That work is actually being facilitated by the Boston Opportunity Agenda.
Oh, okay. That's great. I totally forgot what I was going to say. That's great. I would say two things. Sorry, I remember now. I think you referenced earlier, I don't know who it was, around teachers having time to plan, I think you said that, and how important that is. I mean, I think we already kind of have that model if we look at the summer learning programs and the fact of teaming up with out-of-school time, you know, organizations, community-based organizations that, that have the enrichment portion, and then there are BPS teachers, and the BPS teachers teach some part of the day, they get to plan the other part, the enrichment piece happens at the other part of the day, but then there's this really beautiful triangle, and, you know, there's a lot of measurement around critical thinking, there's badging going on. So I mean, I think that, that, and the reason I say that is because many times, you know, we, we don't think about other things that are already happening or making sure that we include again that triangle. And my, my last just comment is, and maybe question to you, Dr. Chang, is, you know, looking at some of these differences and, and just nationally and here, you know, the fact that, that there, there's more widening of gaps, you know, is very concerning to me, or stagnation, and mostly the gaps, I mean, that really worries me. So I'm wondering, what are the conversations that you're having in some of the national places you're going to, and then what's going to be different here? What, what, how are we tackling? I mean, I know we have the OAG, and maybe this is, you know, a conversation that's ongoing, but it's, it just seems like we keep having all our reports tell us the same thing, and we are in a place where we really need to not leave any more children behind.
I will, I will respond by saying that, while there are not any clear conclusions, there are, there definitely are a lot of national conversations happening around resegregation of cities and disappearing middle class as being issues of widening of opportunity and achievement gaps. Resegregation of cities and widening of, or disappearance of our middle class, disappearing middle class. So there's a certain, those are two things I've heard. That doesn't absolve our responsibility as a school system to do what we need to do to close these gaps, though. I'm just saying that.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Dr. Coleman.
Great. This is, this is very exciting, but I want to follow up on, on some of Alex's comments, and I really appreciate the conversation about the curricular changes. I think one of the questions we would want to have is, what are the drivers of improvement, and why do we hit that asymptote? So it's good data, but we'd like to, I would want more explanation for it. And so that drivers, and, and so the, the, if I could hypothesize from what you said, the drop that we've had over the past couple of years is because, for some reason, we were less rigorous, and now we're focusing more on rigor, and we're doing more professional development, is focused in the classroom and building practices, and, and that should drive some change. Is that, so that, so as we go forward with these reports, we really want to get that specified, the relationship between what we're doing the relationship between what we're doing and our outcomes. And so if we're not progressing, we'll be able to say, well, that's not working, so let's try something else. And so I think that relationship between the outcomes and what we're doing. And I truly appreciate that in relative terms, you know, we can feel pretty good about ourselves. But in absolute terms, this is really awful. If you go to, if you go to slide number four, a little bit answering the question that, what I would say that tells me is that thirty percent of our students are coming in ready to be college and career ready. Because only thirty percent of them are meeting expectations or exceeding them in eighth grade across the board. That's deeply disturbing, deeply scary. And again, given that in relative terms we're doing well, I, this is not a blame moment, right? I'm not blaming anyone or saying that it's somehow was a failure on our part to put the effort in. But it does put a fine point on our numbers. And so the question of what are we going to do becomes more urgent. And this is really, and having the plan, but I would say, and correct me if I'm wrong, I read that as saying thirty percent of our students, only thirty percent of our students are coming into our high schools prepared to be successful. Is that a fair interpretation of slide four?
I think that is what the, the data says. And I think that, you know, we have raised the bar for ourselves as a nation and definitely the state of Massachusetts in terms of what we really expect. And so, you know, if you look in reports five, 10 years ago, you'll see proportions of students that are basic and above being the thing that we're kind of looking at. But, but that's not, that's not really what we're looking at now. And so, yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, these, the NAEP assessments are also internationally benchmarked as well. So we can draw some conclusions about where our students are performing in the US versus other countries as well. And yeah, the bar has been raised quite a bit for, for us.
As, as it should be. So, but, but one of the questions that we had, so you know, obviously we all, many of us listened to the radio today and had these tear-jerking stories about my kid can't get into these charter schools where, where they're, they are being driven to meet expectations. So we as a district need to really, you know, deeply grapple with that other seventy percent. And, 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 and as part of the gaps, I think the gap is, you know, suggests that demonstrates the problem, but even more than that in absolute terms, we have seventy percent of our population that's unprepared when they finish our eighth grades. And what, and so we need, coming back to what Dr. Tran shared with us before, really need to be really focused on what are we doing to break that cycle? And what more do we need? I think the letter that Chairman LaCanto is, is sharing with the, with the legislation, what more do we need to really drive change? Because, you know, we, we have the opportunity, because we are better than most, to be a model for the nation. And how can we help take, take our, what we're good at and really significantly increase it? So I want to thank you for the report. It's very powerful. But I, you know, in absolute terms, I think we want to think about, we, I think that has to be front and center.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. I want to thank first my, my fellow members for asking very pointed questions and, and very articulate analysis of this material. I want to thank Ms. Wagner Lamb and her office as well for, you know, taking what's a very big, meaty, weighty report that we received a few weeks ago and boil it down into eleven very succinct slides. That, you know, I don't need to repeat what my fellow, my colleagues have stated, but you know, this lays bare for us once again, you know, what the gaps are out there and where the areas are that we need for focus. I appreciate all of the comments tonight specifically around our efforts around professional development. And I think this dovetails quite nicely with some of the work that's been done with the Boston Teachers Union in going out and finding grants. Nellie Mae, I believe, has won recently to support professional development for our teachers in the schools. And also the evaluation tools that Dr. Chang alluded to that we'll hear more about in the, the performance meter in the next couple, next couple of weeks and how we're, we're thinking about alternatives that might better measure or better capture the readiness of our students for college, career, and life. So thank you again. We look forward to probably seeing you again in a few short weeks on the performance meter. And we'll, we'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on now to our final report this evening, an update on the Dorchester Academy. At this time, I'd like to invite Dan Anderson, our Executive Director of Strategy, and Shira Djakovnik, our Director of Turnaround and Transformation, to please step forward with their presentation. First, I'll turn it over to the Superintendent for opening comments.
Thank you so much. Shira is not able to join us. She had a family emergency. So Dan Anderson will be making a presentation. I believe Dr. Muncie is very excited also to join him as well. Today, this evening, we're going to discuss a proposal to close Dorchester Academy and move its program to a new location to build on some major successes this year. As I said earlier, we should be very proud of the work that's happened this school year. At the same time, the conditions of the school, especially as relates to state accountability, makes it very difficult to sustain and build on this progress. This report also fits into a broader effort to redesign our all-ed programming. This first step will improve access to alternative program for many of our students at Excel High School and assist that school community with their turnaround plan. Excel High does have a high number of off-track youth. And this team of people who have been working together this year will be able to provide some immediate support to the school and potentially help incubate new programming, not only at Excel, but also across the district. With that, I'll turn it over to Dan Anderson and Dr. Donna Muncie.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Dr. Chang, thank you for having us. Today, we're asking for a school committee to support, as Dr. Chang said, our plan to transition Dorchester Academy. In light of the great work done at the school this year, but in the context of the specific challenges that remain regarding the school's status, we're seeking to close the school while retaining and moving its effective program to link with another BPS school, Excel, where it can have a greater impact on more students. Some background on Dorchester Academy. In the fall of two thousand and fourteen, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education placed Dorchester Academy, then a low-performing level-three school, into level-four. At that time, the school was a standard open enrollment high school in BPS. The turnaround plan created by BPS included a partnership with local agency ABCD to provide alternative education programming beginning in the two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen school year to grow the program over time and to increase the number of off-track students successfully graduating from high school. Over the two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and seventeen school years, enrollment remained low. One effect of the enrollment size was the DA never had enough students taking the MCAS assessments to provide sufficient evidence of academic progress to be considered for exit of level-four under the state accountability system. Additionally, several metrics such as attendance and graduation rate showed a need for improvement in the school's program. Last summer, after two years of ABCD operating the school, the school returned to full operation by BPS. Many of the school's approximately seventy students moved to more appropriate placements for the start of the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen academic year. Teachers were also offered an opportunity to find other placements during this time, many of whom chose to do so, though several remained. That's the dedicated team you heard about earlier. The school opened with enough returning teachers and staff to provide ample support for students at a somewhat higher staffing ratio than is customary in most BPS schools. This year at Dorchester Academy, a small team of teachers and support staff remained. They made adjustments to the program and have worked this year to serve the fewer than thirty remaining students after the transfers, all of whom are relatively close to graduation. The DA team refined a competency-based program that gave students an individualized path toward graduation. And in addition to their coursework, students have been exploring college and career opportunities and engaging in community service. In January, as we heard, several students completed their studies and graduated from Dorchester Academy. Several of the students have begun their college studies as well. Currently, fewer than twenty students remain in the school. Most are expected to graduate by the conclusion of this school year, the seventeen, eighteen school year. At the same time, BPS is currently examining alternative education programming across the district to ensure that the right array of options is available for students in the system. There are two main factors that govern our planning for the program for the coming year. First, the teaching, learning, and student support at DA this year have enabled significant progress and yielded vastly improved outcomes for students, which is promising work that we wish to sustain. Second, DA faces structural challenges that will impede any future growth. It has very few students remaining, and in its current format, the program's not sustainable. Because it has not had a sufficient cohort since its level-four designation to demonstrate progress on targets, the school will be eligible for a level-five designation as early as the coming year. At best, DA would not be able to exit level-four until it enrolled enough students for at least three years running to demonstrate evidence of strong academic achievement. These are circumstances which are especially difficult for an alternative program intended to remain relatively small. And also because those students would need to be first-time test takers in the tenth grade. Our proposal, therefore, is a recommendation that Dorchester Academy close as a school at the end of the current academic year. The program at Dorchester Academy has successfully accomplished its goals for this year, and we want to move forward. In order to sustain and grow that program that is currently at DA, our intention is to keep the team intact as a group and move them together as a standalone program to be housed at Excel High School. This will further strengthen the programming at Excel, which has language about serving students with an alternative program in its turnaround plan, and this would augment that work. We would aim to expand the redesigned alternative education program to serve up to forty students for school year eighteen, nineteen, with adequate space to accommodate the teacher team and their model to serve off-track students. The few remaining students who do not graduate this year will have the option to remain with the teachers they know or to work with BPS staff to identify a placement that is best for them. We've conducted engagement in anticipation of this conversation. This included reaching out last week to all students and families still enrolled at DA, starting with phone calls home to all families. We reached about two-thirds through that method, notifying them of the BPS proposal to close the school and move the program. We also sent a letter home to all students and families confirming again the details shared in the phone calls. And during this process, the staff has been involved as well, including a meeting with Dr. Chang earlier this year to discuss how the work of the program could evolve and transform, which also helped lead to this proposal that you are hearing tonight. As we said, we've conducted outreach to families in April. This evening, we're presenting this proposal, which we hope you'll vote on during the May ninth meeting. And May tenth, with that vote, we will ramp up the implementation planning to prepare for the move and consistent student support, as well as program expansion at the new site. Therefore, our statement that we're putting forward is for a vote is that Dorchester Academy will close on June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen. We will between the vote and then implement plans to move the program to Excel High School to sustain it further. Thank you for your time this evening. We look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I'll open it up to the committee now for questions. Mr. O'Neil, if you'll start us off. Okay.
Go ahead. You and I think alike on this topic anyway.
Boy, I don't know where to start. Okay. I will start with, I don't believe that a week of, a week of go-phone calls is an adequate time period to tell families. So it's not a lot of families, I understand, or you have.
We also had talked to the families in the fall when they were, when they were, when the students were coming back to school.
That this was happening, this proposal today.
What? That said that we were asking for their, when the students said they wanted to re-enroll, we said, that's great. We are really working to help your student be successful this year. We really were careful when we were making the school a little bit smaller that we were able to try to help students who were going to need more than a full year to finish to relocate somewhere else. We talked to, to the school committee about this last fall.
And I do remember that.
Right. And so the students that were there, we had every expectation and hope, hope that they would finish. So the outreach to the families is in conjunction with the monthly newsletters that you've, we've been sending you off and on about the work that's going on there, along with the regular outreach from the families. We, we took the extra step just to make certain everyone had the most up-to-date information. So it's not a first-time outreach.
Right. So I know we talked in the fall, but I think because this is a proposal at school committee, I would just say that in the future, to just have more time than say, next, you know, next week, we're talking at school committee. I guess, I, you know, I'm a huge, huge fan of alternative education. I go all the way. I, I think it's, it's very necessary for many students. I, I'm not, I have, I know ABCD well. Have done a lot of good work with university high school. I'm not, you know, saying that this is not accurate. But there, I just wonder in terms of the monetary support for ABCD, was that comparable to the monetary support, like given, I know it's less staff right now, but when ABCD was there with whatever fully staff they have, was it, was it comparable? Besides ABCD putting in their own money, was it comparable? And the reason I ask this is not just for this instance, but just when I look at alternative education, especially external programs, it is less dollars that we spend on some of the students that have the largest amount of issues.
Yes. Well, in the, the agreement with Dorchester Acad, Dorchester Academy wrote a turnaround plan, and we received school improvement grant funds for that. All of those funds followed the program to, to Dorchester Academy. So they had significant, they had actually more resources per student than our student, than the students had this year, with the exception of the fact that there were so many fewer students, the, the teaching ratio was much lower. But other than that, they had, they had access to the same kinds of support staff and also to the same, to, to a large number, a lot of money. I can find our school improvement grant and let you know what the annual allocation was. I think, I think Dorchester, I mean, ABCD and our, and our discussions about why they were, they want, we, we took control of the school for this year were much more around the fact that they were trying to incubate a new model there and also to grow, and also to try to grow a program with all of the constraints and demands and expectations that being in turnaround status implies. So I, I don't feel as though anything that, that happened with regard to their time there or to their decision for the district, the, the school to come back to the district should reflect poorly on ABCD in any way, shape, or form. I think it was, it's very, very hard to grow a brand-new program when it's fully funded and it has its own set of expectations. But when you have actually the expectation that, that you follow all of the mandated rules related to turnaround, plus that you're testing enough students to be able to produce actionable test scores, which not all of our current alt-ed programs do, since most children take their first round of MCAS, which is the one that counts for accountability in their homeschool. So there were a lot of things that, the plan was written for this to happen the year that before Dr. Chang and I arrived. So we certainly would think twice before we would ever think about doing something like this. But I think everyone entered into this thinking, there's a large population of students who are off-track at Dorchester Academy. This would be a great opportunity to help them. So I really, I mean, I'm not trying to, I'm just basically trying to explain based on what you're asking.
Yep. So I agree with your statement. I mean, I do think a factor is when you have more staff and you have less students, you obviously can do more things. So, and I, I don't work at ABCD, so I'm not trying to, I'm, I just tried to lay out kind of like the, you know, my understanding, their understanding of when they took the school over is very different than the understanding of BPS. So I do think going forward, it is very important to spell out what are the expectations on each side? Because we want to make sure obviously that we have partners and obviously that we value our partners. I guess I, I feel oftentimes when we make these decisions, we keep talking about bill BPS. And we haven't really decided what we're doing yet. We're in this process and we're exploring and all, we did this report. But it seems to me, and, and I say this very, with a heavy heart, because I love, I love alternative education and I think we need more programming. But I just don't, I'm, I'm just wondering why, why we would. But I just don't, I'm, I'm just wondering why, why we would transfer this program over. I'm not, not, I mean, how many students are left? And it just seems like I don't want to create something else that's going to be closed down again, because it just seems like it's been through so many iterations, and I don't want any more students to be told again, like, this is not working, or whatever. So I just need to get a sense of how many students we're talking about that are transitioning over. What is the makeup of the students? Are the, are students mostly far and old? Are they young and near, young and far? I, I don't know.
So when you say when they're transitioning over, right now, we have an expectation that only one student from Dorchester Academy might go up with the school, but if other people don't finish, they'll go up to Excel as well. We, we learned a lot from the Dorchester Academy experience in last year in the writing of the turnaround plans for Brighton and Excel. We included specific supports for both of those schools for our off-track youth inside of those schools. And so what this, this transition to Excel, this faculty has agreed to go up there and to be an additional support, to support the off-track youth at that school in alignment with what we had put into the turnaround plan about recognizing that their special needs and sometimes the programmatic offerings you're putting into place to jumpstart overall improvement are not exactly the most aligned to what students who are off-track need. So what we've discovered over the course of this year is that there are many more students at Excel who might benefit from having this program in place there. Some of the programming that we provided last year was in place at Excel, and others required the students to go to Diploma Plus in Charlestown, and a lot of the students really wanted to stay at their school. So there's a lot, I, I think, I think, is this what your question, am I answering your question?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand the shifting, and I also always get concerned when there's a school and another school, and how does it get owned? I mean, I think we saw some ramifications of when, you know, Diploma Plus was closing and that, you know, it wasn't owned by the rest of the school. So I, I'm just trying to wrap my head around, you know, the why. I'm just not understanding the why. Maybe it's just me, and I'm, and, and other people maybe should ask questions, and maybe I'll, it will, it will sink in as other people ask questions.
This is not going to be a school within a school. This is going to be a program that's going to be, that's going to actually be placed at the school, but it will be, it will be under the direct supervision of the Office of Secondary Schools.
So it will not be called Dorchester Academy. It will just be Excel High School?
It will be, it will be a program at Excel High School.
So the, the school code that currently is tagged onto Dorchester Academy will be closed, and with that closure will be the end of that school's accountability status. That staff and the one, potentially a handful of remaining students will accompany that staff to Excel High School and become Excel High School students. But Dorchester Academy as a location code will cease to exist along with its accountability code.
So it will not be an independent, it will be Excel High School?
That's right.
Okay. So, okay, that, thank you for clarifying that. And I'm just going to say comment, no, no more questions from me, but my comment is, again, I mean, whether we're talking about Dorchester, whatever, I think that we need to make a bigger front and center space for alternative education. I think we need to, I know we don't have money. I don't know where we're going to get it. We just have to figure out how to move things. But I do think that those particular students need a lot more resources, and I think we should give it to them.
Yeah. One really quick thing that's, I think, emerging, that's emerging data set which we will be sharing before the end of the school year is that our open enrollment high schools are showing just as much success, if not more, success with off-track youth than our alt settings. So it's not just about alternative ed. It's apparently about programming that exists in those settings that's most important. So it's not just the label of alternative school. It's more importantly, it's the type of programming we're providing young people.
Right. It's, yeah, it's a type of programming. I agree with you to some extent. I think there's also a place where we know that young people have significant issues happening in a school, and they need to be in a different setting. So even though I agree with what you're saying, I, I think there is still a space for alternative education. And I agree, it's, it's a way, everybody should be alternative, for goodness sakes.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. Mr. McClay.
So will the students in the program be in their own separate cohort within the school? Or will they be integrated into, like, the existing students body?
We'll have Freddie Fuentes answer that. Thank you for your work this year.
Thank you. What we're going to be doing is looking and replicating the same model we've used at DA. So they will be in their own separate cohort. So the students that are transferring in, basically, if there are, we think there are three. There are fifteen kids in queue to graduate. There's one student because of certain social-emotional issues that has the challenge. Of the fifteen, pending now that we've gotten results, a portfolio of one, we may be able to graduate those fifteen. If we have one, if we have three, we don't expect more than that, they will be in a separate cohort, finishing up the work that they need to, to graduate as part of that DA framework, even though DA will be closed, but they're meeting that graduation expectation. So it's not new graduation expectation. The new students that come into the program will be cohorted, and they'll be doing the same type of individualized work. What was done at DA was an individualized approach to competency education, where no one student had the same schedule as the other. It was used to really model, and to some extent, when we talk further about Parthenon, what DA did was the response to implementing the areas of change that we're looking at. So that's the type of work that's going to be done. It's very intensive. In terms of answering your other question, during every week for the last three weeks, faculty and Ms. Reese have actually been visiting homes and talking to parents. We do this as a regular outcome piece to update parents on where things are at, in that we've also shared the newsletter and information. So although Dr. Muncy mentioned what was going on, we've been doing this and talking about this with our families in terms of extension for about the last four months, uh, four weeks. So it's not been a new piece.
Thank you, Mr. McClay. Mr. O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Oliver Davila, I share a lot of your concerns. This strikes me as, I think, in literary or hysterical term, historical terms, you would call this a Hobson's choice. And I think it's been a fait accompli since the beginning of the year. Decisions were made about the students who were enrolled at DA that did not, at that level, reach the school committee for decision-making. And by actions that were taken and decisions that were made, we're now at such a small cohort of students, and we have those graduating. So yes, I do appreciate the competency-based model that is being done with this particular group of students, similar to what's done at Boston Day and Evening Academy, I think would be the perfect example, right? But having said that, this is a, this is a fait accompli when you just have a couple of students. I do wish we were a bit more transparent, because no one has said tonight what will happen to the building. And yet, many people in the community are saying, "Well, this is being done to give BAA space, your swing space." And we should be transparent about that, that yes, this will end up with some space, and yes, we're going to use that space. Because when you don't say that as part of the, as part of the process, even it's not entering the decision-making process, but it is still what people are talking about, you have to be transparent about it. I am concerned, and, and so, Ms. Muncy, you mentioned, did you say only one student, you anticipate only one student will be going from, in effect, Dorchester Academy over to Excel?
We, one to three. That's on our current count. I actually know, most of the students are on track to graduate. There's three students that were, two that were waiting on MCAS appeal. But of the ones that we have, we have thirteen kids that have passed all their MCASs, and it's now about the coursework. We do have, and this is what is really important, the students that we've been working with, a number of them are extreme, extreme fragile. These are students that have extreme agoraphobia that actually cannot be there medical, so, so we've had to recalibrate the program. These are the students that we're working with that are the most fragile. They're incredibly competent, but we think it'll be about three.
I, I want to caution and make sure we think through are there any unintended consequences. And I'm using the historical perspective, because no one knows this better than the person who used to lead Excel High School when it was one of our rising star high schools and one of our rising star head masses because of it. And then the district had the brilliant idea of, "Well, we have Excel doing great, and we have Monument that's struggling, so let's just put the two together." And the state said, "That's wonderful, but we're not changing the goals for Excel on your progress, et cetera, so you're going to continue to be held accountable for what you were doing with this group." And now you have a much bigger group. And all of a sudden, Excel went from one of our stars to, to a school that had challenges because the state refused to change the standards. And this, you know this better than anyone, right? You led Excel to be one of our top schools in the district. And so when we put programs together, I, I want to make sure we've thought through. I don't think it's going to be an issue if it's only one to three students, but these are the type of things we've made, we need to make sure we've thought through.
So a couple of quick notes. We have been working with the state, and they are aware that this is the move we're making, and there will be no, there will be no consequences to the accountability or no connections to accountability at Excel. Of course, Excel is a school that we know just went into Level Four. In terms of just the, the Dorchester Academy, the plan actually at the beginning of the year was to move the school to Endicott Building.
Yeah, you were freeing up that space anyway.
Right.
They didn't, they didn't need the space that they had.
And right now, the Endicott Building used to house a Bridge-Boston charter school. Yes, it is a school of a great, daughter of a great person. And the school, the Endicott Building now is empty.
And the, the space that Dorchester Academy is in and was vacating to go to Endicott is where BAA will be going in.
Yes, the, that's correct. And that, they will be co-located with CASH. So BAA, once they move in, will be where Dorchester Academy is right now, which is right adjacent to CASH.
Which is swing space while the new construction happens. And we're going to have this as Bill BPS kicks in. We're going to have schools moving for a couple of years while they end up with better space. That's great. I just want to make sure it gets mentioned and that it gets discussed, because other people's, otherwise, we know how Boston works. Well, this was really a secret plan, when it wasn't. You, as, thank you, Superintendent, for pointing out rightfully that you had already publicly announced that Dorchester Academy was moving to the Endicott Building. I, I just want to go back, Superintendent, to a comment you made. We are all looking forward to the final results of the work you're having done on off-track students. And I understand your viewpoint that some will interpret that our traditional schools actually do better with off-track students. That does not in any way, to me, negate the need for having a robust alternative ed program. There's a difference between off-track students early in their high school education and many of the students who attend our off-track schools, excuse me, attend our alternative ed programs, many of whom are very far off-track or have not been successful at our traditional schools. So yes, I recognize that our traditional schools do have a great track record in pulling off-track students back on track. That does not mean we short-thrift in any way the need for an alternative ed program. And quite frankly, and I'm speaking very honestly here, I'm not at a point where I can say I have a level of comfort in our approach to alternative ed in the district right now that we should have. And I know you're looking hard at the off-track youth and what this means for alternative ed in our district, and I appreciate the hard look that's being done at it. But I'm looking forward to a really, pretty robust report from you and your team of where you want to go with alternative ed. Because we should be, we, we have the raw ingredients to have an outstanding alternative ed program in this city. We don't have it right now, and I don't see how it fits in the bigger picture the way it should. And so I'm laying that challenge out for you, because there are committee members who are very focused on alternative ed.
I think it's, I'm just going, I agree completely, and just want to reiterate, for me, it's, it's the type of programming that we provide for young people to ensure that they're successful. And that could be an alternative ed setting, that could be in a traditional education setting. It could be a mix. It could be a hybrid. I think there's a lot of possibilities, and we will have that plan laid out. Dan?
We view this, the imperative of changing Dorchester Academy wasn't about a facility. It was about a two thousand and seventeen, twenty-seven percent graduation rate. And the, taking that as an imperative and an opportunity to take one of our programs in our group of alternative education programs and help it reset. And that's the, the work that you heard about earlier today. And what we're trying to do right now is, excuse me, is set up one of these programs for the opportunity to, now that it's reset and been really successfully serving students this year, to grow out and serve a few more students. And this is sort of the, the first opportunity of what Freddie and his team have, have done this year.
I want to be very careful with my language. I am not denigrating the work being done now. I didn't say I'm overly concerned or upset. I'm not raising alarm bells. I chose the language carefully of, "I don't have the level of comfort that I think we should be able to have." So I know a lot of hard work is going on on this. I'm encouraging that to happen. You're trying new ideas. That's great. But these are some of our most fragile youth, and we can't succeed as a system until we succeed with these youth. And so I, I'm encouraging the work, and I'm saying, "Push. Keep coming up with new ideas." We should be nationally leading on this, and we're not right now. But I, I, again, I'm being very careful. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your encouragement. Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Dot Coleman.
Great. Thank you for the answer about the impact of, of the scores on Excel scores. That was my, that was my question. So I'm going to go to share the editorial, editorial comments about alt-ed here. And, and as much as I'm a big believer, I really want a great program, I also want to be explicit about what we do to shrink the feeder to the alt-ed. So that's the K8. So, so I want to make sure we don't lose track of, if we want to bring fewer kids into that situation, where alt-ed is what they would need. We know we're always going to have them, so we also have to have a good system. But I want to keep those two going hand in hand.
Can I make one quick?
Make a comment back on that. Dean Coleman, I'm a hundred percent with you. And, you know, ten years ago, we had nineteen hundred youth dropping out of Boston Public Schools. Right now, we're down to about six hundred and change. But the fact, and so, yes, we are shrinking the supply, right? But we still have six hundred youth dropping out that we want to come back in. We still need to have programs for them that are designed specifically for those students to succeed.
I completely agree with you, but it's a both-and, not an either-or.
Correct. Did you have something to add, Ms., Dr. Muncy?
I do. I'm, I'm not sure. I, what I mostly want to say is, I think, unfortunately, the lesson from Dorchester Academy is that you really can't expect a new model to thrive with an accountability system that's aimed in a different direction. And so as we start to look at how we're going to address the off-track youth that we have and nurture new programming, which in my opinion is necessary, because we, we do need to be able to serve our old and far, our young and far, our old and near, and our, all of those, and our population of older English-language learner arrivals, some of whom come with interrupted education and belong in an alt-ed setting as well. And so as we get ready to nurture new programming, we need to learn new lessons. We aren't going to learn that one again. And we're just very, very happy, I think, that, that the work that's been done this year has helped a subset of the students that were at Dorchester Academy to be, be the successes that they and their families knew they could be and to get ready to the point where they're going off to Ben Franklin, Curry College, and a couple other places. So I just want to add a, a sort of, at least a small celebratory piece to a sad story, because it's always a sad thing when a school closes. But these students have really been, they are, they have really blossomed, and they are really looking forward to, to very exciting futures, as every high school senior in BPS should, should do.
Dr. Muncy, if I may, I'd like to highlight that your comment about how our accountability system punishes us for working with kids who are on a different for working with, uh, kids who are on a different trajectory. And, and historically, the state, I'm actually on the State Accountability Advisory Board, and there's a big resistance to kind of taking that, those needs into account. And that has been very much the tenor and tone of the, um, of the, of DESI for a while. And I'm, I'm wondering, I think with a new su-, uh, commissioner, whether there's an opportunity maybe to bring up the question about can we reevaluate the way in which schools are assessed when they're working with a, a, a different population? That you can't treat them all the same. And I, I hope we can be leaders in that conversation as well. And anything I can do to help, please let me know.
Thank you. We'll, we'll be in touch.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Ms. Oliver Davila, you had an additional comment.
I, I just have a comment, which I, I just wanted to say, um, I think, um, Mr. O'Neil said it best. Um, but I, I wanted to make sure to say thank you to Freddie and Ms. Reese and Leahy and also to you, Donna. And I know you guys have worked hard, so it seemed very harsh. And I wanted to also say that it wasn't, that the work wasn't appreciated this year. But mostly I want to thank the families and the students. Um, I did, um, speak at the DA graduation. I don't know if it was last year or the year before. Um, and the stories of those young people, you know, they made me cry. And I, I think it's, you know, it's not easy work. So, I just want to say thank you and I want to thank the families and the students because it was a lot of transition. Um, and we thank them for their patience with us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Davila. So, first of all, I want to say thanks for keeping us up to date throughout the year with the progress that's been, um, been made at Dorchester Academy. So, this wasn't a surprise for any of us. And, um, I appreciate the fact that we have been, you know, kept in the loop in that regard. I also want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues that, you know, we, we look forward with, um, with great interest to the presentation that is forthcoming from the district about plans for alternative education and off-track youth. You know, this is, as, as, um, Mr. O'Neil pointed out, we still have 600 kids dropping out every year. You know, those are kids that we, we need to retain. You know, those are the kids that, um, are, you know, I think in many ways the embodiment of that achievement gap that we talk about. And, you know, turning around the lives for those kids are, are what turns around the economic engine of this city and, and, you know, really meaningfully changes lives. Um, and so, that's the core of the work that, that I think that we do in this district. So, I, you know, we look forward to that. The one, uh, comment that I had on the presentation is, you know, we heard a lot about why it makes sense for DA to close and for the program to move into another school. What I didn't hear a lot about is why it makes sense for it to be a program and why it makes sense for it to be in Excel. And a couple of the items that I think I'd highlight for, you know, why does it make sense as a program rather than a school on a couple of different levels, financial, operational, academic and social? So, if there's something that you can maybe give us that, that articulates that a little bit more and then we can come back and have a few more questions about Excel specifically.
Okay. Um, well, number one, it, it, another year of honing their program would be the perfect way to incubate the program into a school. And we anticipate needing to open some additional models down the line. Um, but we actually couldn't do both processes at the same time. We couldn't start the process to open a school while we were really not sure how this was going to work. I mean, we had every confidence in the teachers and the leaders, but it was a lot to do to work hard and thoroughly with these students to, to help them reach the successful exit that, that almost all of them are going to have and eventually all of them will have. The reason that, um, we initially asked the teachers if they wanted to put out something like an RFP to go out to all of our open enrollment high schools to see, you know, where they might be located. And, um, and there was some interest in that. But we also talked with them in particular about Excel largely because of the, um, of the need to, uh, need to provide augmented support at Excel around, of, to support the off-track youth. It's not that the other schools didn't have, um, off-track youth as well. But after the 10 students graduated in January, some of the staff from Dorchester Academy volunteered to go up and support, um, Excel. So, there was already a bond beginning. And, um, and we, we all agreed that that would probably be the next step for incubating this program. The program this year served roughly, uh, uh, under 30 students through that, throughout the year. Um, they've said they feel like they can, they can, um, the same number of, of teachers will be able to support approximately 40 students next year. These are all fabulous steps towards incubating a program that could become a school. Um, I don't think we want to get way ahead of ourselves and say, what year are we going to start, you know? But we do know we need additional models for alternative, um, education supports and, and, um, schools. So, that's in no way, um, off the table.
No, in, in Mr.
I'm sorry if I didn't get everything on your question list.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'll, we'll, we'll dance around it. But, um, you know, one of the things that I, I think, um, Mr. Anderson mentioned earlier in his presentation was that the turnaround plan for Excel specifically calls out alternative education. And so, there is a natural, um, mirroring of the, um, the, the program, programatic goals, if you will, between DA and Excel. Um, my question then would be, how do you, how might this program go about? I don't know if recruiting is the right word or, but, you know, matriculating students from Excel or from other high schools across the city into the program? Is there, is there a path, how does that happen? I guess is the easiest way to ask.
My understanding at the moment and, and, um, Dr. Noriega, if you want to say more, or Dr. Mr. Fuentes, is that, um, they'll recruit from inside of Excel for next year. We, we, we know that we have enough students for 40, we have 40 seats. And so, um, again, no pathway to a school has been officially outlined. But it would seem as though the next step after that might be to recruit more broadly because we won't solve, we aren't going to solve, um, an off-track problem in a year for any school, correct? I mean, we just, we have a lot of students in the all ed, in the all ed pipeline. But, um, to the extent that the successes of this year are replicated, it seems like the, the sky should be the limit in terms of thinking and planning within the context of Bill BPS for where that, a new program might open, when it might open, on what timeline and with what focus. As we do get ready to, um, share the information that's been done on our research, the research information that's been done on all ed for us and with us this year, I think that that will offer other opportunities to start thinking and, um, and possibly planning for what, that a new school or two or how we would begin to incubate programming in a way that gives us a chance to see its potential for success as we're getting ready to open it. That's, I mean, that's, if you, do you all want to add anything? No? Okay.
Dr. Quick question.
Do you have anything you want to add?
I'm going to hold up my additional questions for a second. Mr. O'Neil has an additional question.
Just a quick question. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for what you said, Ms. Muncy. So, if there are 40 seats, are those students all going to come from Excel? Or is it also available for placement, for example, from the re-engagement center for students re-entering the system if that program makes sense for them?
It, it, the moment we anticipate that the students will come from Excel, to avoid some of what you were talking about as a potential issue of new people coming into the building. So, that is, that has been the way we've been talking about it with the Excel team.
But if it doesn't fill with, at what point do you open it up for placements from elsewhere if it's not filling from Excel? Or are you confident it's going to fill from Excel?
I'm pretty confident we can fill from Excel. But I also have to say I haven't started thinking about the eventuality that it doesn't yet, but we will.
Because you know what's going to happen when word gets out that there's open seats?
Yes.
In a program that was doing some interesting things this year.
I agree with you. We will get on that.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. So, um, and thank you for that. I think that makes a whole lot of sense and, and gives a little bit better context as to why Excel feels like the right choice for this program. Um, I, I do want to just go back on the, um, initial question around, you know, why a program as opposed to a school? You know, I, I think you note, you noted in your presentation, or it might have been in the appendix, um, that, you know, we don't expect to have any financial savings in 18, 19, um, from this combination. And you talked quite a bit about, um, you know, when you, when we think about, you know, the programmatic approach here, piloting this, if you will, trying to determine how we might be able to create these programs in other schools. We can, um, we can use this as an opportunity to think about, you know, how we fine-tune those academics, uh, fine-tune those, um, uh, operational efforts. The question that I, I keep, that keeps clawing at me, and I think, I think I heard some of this in Ms. Oliver Davila's, uh, questions earlier, was around the social aspect and how those kids integrate within the school. Um, I think, you know, we've heard, um, some comments earlier around the idea that, you know, sometimes big schools are, just aren't appropriate for some of the kids that go into all ed. Whereas, um, other students might actually benefit from being in a broader community. So, you know, just thinking about things like extracurriculars, sports, um, so on and so forth. What is the access that, um, might be able to be, not, I won't necessarily say will be provided, but might be able to be provided to these students through this combination?
Let me take that. Um, I want to go back to something that was mentioned by Dr. Muncy, which is, uh, this team of individuals will help support the turnaround effort at Excel. That is a school that is a level four. So, instead of having a different school, this is a program that will help support a turnaround effort at a school with a, um, a number of off-track youth. I have met many of the off-track youth at Excel, I remember during the turnaround process and them expressing the need for more individualized support. Secondarily, um, as this team begins to do their work, their work will evolve. They are in a different context. And so, if there are opportunities where there could be some inner, more integration with a greater community of Excel, absolutely. They, they're not bound by any sort of rules that they can't evolve the program as needed. That we will learn a lot from a team of educators who are committed to this population of students working at a traditional high school. Because it's a model that we ha-, may, we have at Charlestown. But there are other different, uh, characteristics of the Dorchester Academy team that we can bring to bear, so.
Very good. Well, thank you. That's all I have for now. And I, I appreciate, uh, once again, Mr. Anderson, Dr. Muncy, your presentation tonight. Uh, we'll look forward to taking action on this proposal at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on now to public comment on reports. Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. LoCanto. We have three speakers. Peggy Wiesenberg, she'll be followed by John Mudd and Megan Wolf.
Thank you. I may sound like a broken record, um, as to some of you. But I think the question that, um, keeps coming up is where is the 10-year education and facilities master plan? And the component for high school, um, whether it's alternate ed or others? I do find it troubling, um, that Dorchester Academy is closing. This is after the Mata Hunt was closed. I don't know what's, I mean, there are obviously numerous factors that are driving the closings. But death by a thousand cuts of finances and enrollment being controlled from central and dwindling or shifting principles and constantly creating instability, I fear will lead to more closings. I also think it would behoove the committee to get very soon a list of all the possible swing spaces. I know if you go through some of those individual reports, you know, they'll say whether a school has swing space or not. But I think the public needs to know, you know, where you're going to be investing in major repairs or buildings and what the sequence is over the next 10 years for this, but, it, excuse me. But, um, the arts academy plans were, um, what started before Superintendent Chang came in. And there were numerous ideas going forward. And it was out there last year that they would move to BAA. But having things happen piecemeal is not the same as putting out the details of the 10-year plan so that people can see and not just have the, um, domino effect spill out in pieces, but put it out there and then let the people who of Boston know. I think, uh, Mr. O'Neil is right. We need to be transparent. Thank you.
John Mudd, I'd like to sort of reinforce and expand on some of the comments that school committee may, members made during the NAEP report. Uh, because I think the most interesting part of that was the discussion around what are we thinking about, uh, doing about the results of the report? And what are the, the issues that the district kind of sees as most crucial? And I have urged for a long time that you request, that the, the school committee requests that the district in making these presentations include sections on the lessons learned from the data and what action or options are being anticipated. And I think this, I, I continue to hear this, that people mentioned cognitively rigorous learning, second grade literacy, from other districts targeted curriculum, professional development, principal, you know, uh, development and accountability. That, that needs to be not just sort of ad hoc responses, but I believe an informed, you know, presentation as part of, uh, of what you hear. Data is not the goal. Improving the system is the goal. Secondly, as you know, I, when I get reports like this, I tend to hone in on the achievement gap. And I would say I've urged you to, again, to ask, the, the district included the absolute gaps, you know, which are sometimes dramatic and, and a little bit scary. They did not do the trend data. I, I see these charts and I've seen them for 25 years probably, where you have the lines. And I do the arithmetic. What is the gap at the beginning and what is the gap at the end? And if you look at fourth grade and eighth grade, reading and math for black and Latino students, the achievement gap increased in every one of those variables. If my arithmetic is accurate, and I think it probably is. And I think that needs to be highlighted as a concern. Even more concerning, uh, the Globe article talked about the, the fact that, that black students, I believe it was in grade four, you know, the reading declined over the past few years. If I look at the data on, that I see on mathematics, uh, by race and ethnicity in fourth and eighth grades, the, the performance of Hispanic and black youth on both fourth grade and eighth grade mathematics has declined since either 2011 or 2013. The chairman is, or former chairman, excuse me, is very measured in his responses. I find this sort of frightening, somewhat scary and maybe even something that does call for the alarm bells. Uh, I believe and I would hope that you could request from the academic departments and from the schools division, what is their response to these results so that you can see some improvement for the kids that I know we all care about? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mudd. Ms. Wolf.
Good evening. Um, I just want to express confusion about a couple of comments that were made tonight regarding the closing of Dorchester Academy that seemed sort of contradictory and were maybe misleading for students, families and teachers of the school. Um, the first is that in the fall, the plan was to move Dorchester Academy to the Endes-, Endicott School. A plan that I know was announced. School, a plan that I know was announced last June, at least to the Boston Arts Academy community. But if that was the plan, then I'm confused about why students and parents at Dorchester Academy were told in September that if they had more than a year to go towards their diploma that they should transfer elsewhere. Why would they be told this if the plan, if the program was moving? Wouldn't the BPS want to keep as many students as possible in the program? Particularly when combined with Dr. Chang's comments in August, as quoted in the Globe, that there were no plans to close the school at the present time, it's an especially confusing picture. And to Mr. O'Neill's point, when there are mixed messages or when information trickles out, an unfortunate lack of trust is reinforced. This may be a reasonable decision, I don't know. I am disappointed about losing potentially another alt-ed program. But the implementation brings to mind other instances when enrollments are controlled by BPS to strengthen or weaken a program or a school. Do students, parents, and teachers need to read the tea leaves as the Dorchester Academy community was doing during the summer and fall? Or will BPS be transparent and consistent in their decision-making? One final comment, as seen on the DESI website, Excel has a 30% out-of-school suspension rate for students with disabilities. This might be something to pay special attention to regarding the one to three students who will be transferring to the program and the other students who potentially will be enrolled in the future at the alt-ed program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wolf.
Mr. LoCanto, that concludes our speakers this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Any new business? Well, then that concludes our business for this evening. Our next school committee meeting will be, will take place on Wednesday, May 9th at 6:00 PM in this building. If there's nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Sounds like unanimous consent. Good night.